The Custer County VOCC meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is June 28th and the time is 9:00 AM. Mr. Bailey, would you be so kind, sir, in leading us in the pledge of allegiance this morning?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. I want to extend an official welcome to our deputy clerk to the board this morning. He's going to be doing double duty. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you conduct the roll call, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Can.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Klipsman.
Present.
Deputy Clerk to the Board, your knickles.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. And if we could have audience introductions, Mr. Bailey, would you like to begin, sir?
I will.
Representing planning commission today, or?
Are you just here because you don't have anything else to do?
Okay. Thank you.
Tracy Ballard, Tribune.
Okay.
Mrs. Lee or Mr. Barr?
No, we don't care about them.
Yeah.
Police Agent of West Custer County Hospital District.
Jackie Buebers for Sentinel.
Jennifer Anderson, community member.
Cool.
Jennifer. Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I have none.
Commissioner Canada?
No.
Per request from Ms. Jackie, I would move to amend the agenda to add a discussion item of hanger at the airport under new business.
Oh, you're moving then?
Yes, I did.
Moving second to amend the agenda by adding a discussion item under new business concerning
airport discussion?
Is there anybody who would, if they had known this was on here, would want to come discuss it? Is there any controversy, anything like that going on with this?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, I was at the airport board meeting when they talked about this.
Okay. Then I'll follow along with it.
I was there last week at the meeting. Mr. Otto, it's his request. He's signed the lease. I don't think it's a big issue. Further discussion, hearing done, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. The agenda. And I think because...
Put it where?
Let's stick it right after the review of the vouchers. It just will take a couple of minutes. I will not allow her to ramble.
Good luck. Allowing in heaven it happens.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah. So I'm going to just put airport discussion, a second item on the agenda. I should have included that in my motion with consent. You all right, gentlemen?
Oh, fine.
Second item. Okay. Thank you. Approval of the minutes? I don't believe we had any.
I saw.
Commissioner items? I think Commissioner Prince or Can to start last time. So Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin?
Sure. Been busy since, been busy since our last meeting. It seemed like just a couple of days ago.
No.
I attended a discussion with the tourism board about videoing and those kinds of things they're working on. I spent...
May I? Was that their regular meeting?
No. No, this was, this was just a discussion with Bob Swanson.
Oh, no.
Talking about, yeah. No, it was not a board meeting.
Process.
No, we were talking about process in terms of videotaping stores. He's making a video to put in the tourism website. Very similar to what the Chamber of Commerce is doing. And I was hoping those two would get together to make a concerted effort, so. But I had to talk to them about the process, and that's why I just mentioned it now that we talked about that. I spent the entire day with the Upper Arkansas Council of Governments. That's an excellent organization. The commissioners from the four local counties, the mayors from those four towns, city administrators all meet, talk about things that we can do to help the communities in general. There was a discussion about broadband and the broadband initiative, and I encourage them to collaborate with our broadband effort, the Firebird coming up, the Silver Cliff consultant that West Cliff will probably hire also, so that we can have a concerted effort.
Did they mention the 20th, the 10th meeting? There's a meeting that Vogel has on broadband with them.
Yes.
They talked?
They talked about it, but not to great length. Yesterday, I attended the E911 meeting. And after that, I was late, but made it to the attainable housing committee.
Nor did you. You did?
I got here. It was basically breaking up, to be truthful with you, but I made my present.
Still counts.
Did you get any info on them specifically?
No. But there is an initiative. There's two different developers in Silver Cliff right now who are in the process of developing affordable, attainable housing, low-income housing. And I don't mean low income in terms of, you know, taking people who are going to be on Section 8.
First-time house, kind of.
Exactly. In that price range, you know, the 130 to 160, 75 range. So there's two initiatives privately being done in Silver Cliff right now, and those have both got a go-ahead from the zoning and planning of Silver Cliff. So I just wanted to make sure that they coordinated their efforts with Silver Cliff to make sure that we're not duplicating the effort. One thing that did, we did discuss at the housing meeting in Mid-Allah Lake. The university has not gotten back to us on those lots that they discussed to us, even though we've made multiple outreaches to them. So it's not that they're putting us off, it's just, it's just not high on their radar, apparently. So we're still working on those lots that Silver Cliff, the attainable housing group would like to acquire from the university for potential affordable housing or attainable housing in the future. So that's kind of...
Did you get any word on the Elkhmar grant money, what they're doing with it?
If they discussed it, I was not privy to that. I was not there at that time.
Well, I'll shoot, leave a minute.
Yep.
Steve Laswell, an email, and ask him about that. I'm curious to know what they've decided to do with that money.
Surprising the meeting only lasted an hour, and then it dawned on me that's because Vogel was in and Laswell ran it. I don't mean that derogative, and that's a true statement.
Anything else, sir?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Canada?
Yeah, a couple of things. Mentioned the, since you brought it up, there is a, they are, we are going to do that workshop on broadband as soon as Paul Winkie gets the briefing from the same group that they gave the briefing to Laswell. And that'll happen soon.
We're going to do a meeting with us?
We'll all be involved in, in the workshop. But right now, they're bringing, Paul wanted to get his people up to the same speed to understand it before we have the workshop.
Who's going to do the workshop?
All, we want two mayors and us.
So it's commissioner workshop?
Yeah. It's a commissioner workshop with us all to understand what the proposal is. That was the whole...
And you don't have a date yet?
Jack, they can't do that until they, until they have, Paul wanted to get Paul involved, is what they, they wanted to do, to make sure that town of West Cliff understood what it was all about before he went in there on a workshop to the...
Correct.
To get in depth. So he wanted the right guys to be there, up from his board, and they had to, you know, just give them the courtesy. That's what they're trying to do.
So it'll be a workshop from the commissioners?
Yes. Well, and it would be, well, how would we want to couch it? It's a community workshop, right? It's two towns, mayors, and us.
Who's coordinating? Is Vogel coordinating it, or are you coordinating?
No, we are.
Okay. Then it's ours.
It can be ours and, and to make sure that, the whole point, remember when I brought it up, it was Kathy Clark, Sally Clark, and the initiative that Silver Cliff started with her.
Right.
And she was pushing hard to get the community involved, and that's why Silver Cliff, and we decide, well, you've got the county and the mayors, that's the whole county, and then we can decide what we want to do as a community at some point, whether it involves us. And from our point of view, we would like to see the hard line servicing our county assets, like the Justice Center and that kind of thing, or, or the county itself, you know, it's part of the big picture. It's not CenturyLink, it's not Vogel, it's, it's a whole different initiative that would connect those kinds of people together. So we need to understand that we needed a workshop to get it on the table so that we're all on the same sheet, not fighting with each other, or duplicating grant money that Silver Cliff, West Cliff, and us would have to be involved with.
So we'll schedule a VOCC workshop.
Yes, as soon as we...
By two towns.
Right.
That's it.
Right now. And we'll have to talk about it, but we can discuss that as soon as I know where Paul is and Steve Welton isn't invited. That's why the 10th might be worth our time, one of us to attend the county government's broadband thing. I don't know what the counties are doing. Hey, Keith? I better write down, we have a new guest, Keith.
What's your type?
Anything else, sir?
Yeah. Talked about the airport board, had a good meeting with them, didn't, we went through the, the entire effort that Ot 6 is proposing, and I mentioned we were waiting for the grant money to come through on the fuel system to determine some of the options that we have. They're working with the tourism board. I was glad to see that they have been involved with the tourism board, and I think the board gave them a $500 grant to help promote the airport. So just working with them to do that, that's pretty good, Keith. Then I wanted to mention road and bridge. You may have noticed hermit roads looking pretty scabby with a bunch of black asphalt on them. And people say, "What are you guys doing?" Well, they're prepping that, and they started prepping several of these roads, like Schoolfield and others, for a chip seal. So eventually, you'll see that all be a nice surface like they did on the streets of West Cliff here, year or two ago. So that's part of the strategic planning that Gary's doing with the roads in the valley. Not to worry, it's, it's patchwork right now. And other than that, I don't, do you have any, anything else that I overlooked? We are doing, I want to invite everybody. We invited the mayors, I'd like to invite you two to the, there's a community Bible study, Vacation Bible School with a group of churches that have gotten together to sponsor it as a community, and multi-denominational. And they're wrapping up today with the, the host theme was the wedding feast of the king. And it's a, it's been great having all the kids. I think Tracy's been involved with it. And they're bringing it to the end, they're going to have a little presentation, and they're going to have a wedding feast of the king at 11 to 12 to 12:30 today. So just drop by and say hi to, to your community at work. And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Before I forget, I wanted to ask you a question, Mr. Miller. Did you attend the water conference thing that's, I think, put on by San Isabel Land Trust last night? I could not. I have the PowerPoint to read through. Yeah. Was, was it last night? Because I had initially, and maybe that was a preview of it last week, Monday, but then it was again last night. Obviously, I did not attend either, so thank you. Appreciate it. So let's see. Sacred Crystal Electric had their annual meeting here in West Cliff in Custer County last week, so I attended that on the 20th. And then was invited to attend the Pike's Peak Range Riders VIP dinner out at Music Meadows Ranch on the 21st, so I attended that as well. Fred Berry, a prominent rancher, community member, passed away. We had his memorial service on the 22nd. I apologize for not knowing you were there until you had sent me a text message afterwards. I never did see you, but...
It was so crowded. I was way, way in the back.
Were you in the back?
Yeah, it was pretty crowded.
So appreciated your compliment. Thank you, sir. But sorry I didn't see you there. Spoke to Commissioner Canada briefly. And then the 24th, I attended the Central Front Range Transportation Planning Region Meeting in Canyon City. And that same day, was on a conference call with the chairman of the underfunded courthouse security grant commission. And we are trying to come to a mutual, thanks, sir, mutual agreement on a date. It looks like right now, it'll probably be November the 19th, we will meet in Denver and go over the submitted applications to distribute $3 million on those grants, so. And then the 25th, I, Mike Halpin and I worked on welding some tabs on the conxes over at the sheriff's office, getting ready to put trusses up, to put a roof on between, span those two conxes for some additional stories. Then the 25th, I went, I reviewed the applications for the OEM position.
I had read them.
Seven applications.
That's a good one.
Yesterday, attended the 911, E911 meeting, held at the West Cliff Town Hall, had a good meeting there. And then went over and attended the part, attended part of the hospital district board meeting as well, so. Other than that, I think that was all. And I had to leave. Public comment was clear at the end, so I really didn't get to, to address an issue that I had to bring up before the board, but I will clear my calendar a little better next time and then stay till the end. That's the problem with public comment being at the end, man, you got to sift through it all. Yes, ma'am.
If you want time on the agenda, just let me know and I'll put you on the agenda. That way you don't have to wait till the very end.
Yeah. And this, obviously, as you know, was kind of a response to our meeting earlier in the day, so.
Sure, yeah. Because I was kind of surprised when you left, too, so.
Yeah.
We can put you on the agenda, that's no problem.
Yeah. And I did thank Mr. Tobin, Chairman Tobin, for allowing me to speak on another issue without being on the agenda or waiting for public comments. So I thanked him for that on the way out. But yeah, I just, something comes up at the last minute, you want to go talk to him and then sift through that entire agenda, and I just couldn't do it. So I didn't, wasn't offended at that, it was my choice to leave. But thank you. Appreciate it. I think that's all. I'll wait to address some other things. I think they're going to come up on the agenda, we can have a discussion then, sir. Anything else? Yes, sir?
If you don't mind, Mr. Canada, on the broadband meeting, do you know where, I was reviewing the email, and I didn't see the time and location.
I didn't either. I got to find out.
Okay. Let me know when you find out. Thank you.
Yeah. No problem. That's in Salida.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm assuming it'll be at that steam plant conference room.
I think it is. I don't know. Who knows?
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen? Commissioner items? Upper Ark report, Water Conservancy District. I really don't have anything. I saw Terry Skangus submitted an article to the newspaper, and I looked at it and read it. I'm guessing that the board of directors said, "Hey, we need to get some information out about water in general," and I appreciate their efforts at trying to educate the citizenry. So that's all I have for that. Anything, gentlemen?
All I have is to remind everybody, on the 24th, the U.S. Department of Geological Survey is coming to do that presentation, Ranchers Roost, on the 24th, 10:00. And don't get that in the papers. One of the things we requested is approved to get some understanding of what's going into the water.
And you've made reservations for the room?
Yep. Yep, this time, Tom.
Sure, I've got it down, yeah. And are we paying to rent that room, or how does that handle?
Don't.
Upper Ark. Okay. Good. All right. Attorney items?
At our last meeting in San Isabel, you asked me to give you a definition of what constitutes a commercial enterprise. So I did some research on that and sent that out to you, which, I mean, it's pretty basic and pretty common sense. I mean, lemonade stands aren't, but pretty much anything above that could be considered a commercial enterprise. But it's more of a, I think, a case-by-case basis. You'd have to look at it and decide if this is just sort of a one-time thing, or if it's an ongoing business intending to make a profit. I did some research on short-term rentals. I shared some of that with Jackie. I don't know if she's even had a chance to look at that yet or not, but some of the other counties that have ordinances regarding short-term rentals, and then the one, is this proposed, the one for the town of West Cliff? Is that where it's at right now?
West Cliff has not ratified it. Didn't propose it.
Yeah, I've seen that one. Also, at the meeting in San Isabel, we opened the bids for purchase of those lots in the Golden...
Valley. Golden Arrow Valley.
Golden Arrow Valley subdivision. There was, we only had bids for one couple. I contacted Mrs. Burton after that and talked to her, told her that her bids were, the bids submitted by her and her husband were accepted. We talked about whether she felt a warranty deed was necessary, because I had gone to CJD about it. Those lots have belonged to the county since he's worked for the county, so it's 30 years before, 30 years ago, the county acquired ownership through non-payment of taxes and nobody else wanted them. And she, I didn't feel like a warranty deed was necessary, and she didn't feel that that was necessary either, so I actually, I prepared a resolution and a deed of county, which is the equivalent of a quitclaim deed from the county. I was going to have it on the agenda today, but I gave Mrs. Burton, talked to Meredith and Wanda a little more time to get the funds. I told her it needed to be payment by certified funds to the treasurer, so I think it's set for July 3rd now.
Yep.
And let's see. The usual stuff, talking to Jackie this time, was, some of it was about a subpoena she got from the public defender to appear and testify in a criminal case on July 15. She mostly was wondering if the county would buy her a new outfit, so she was unusually stunning with that.
Wow. I like it.
I'm all in. I'm assuming you totally agree with what you said.
I said, you know, we probably allocate at least $1,000 for that. That's all. Oh, the other thing, this is personal, let you know, my son is home now from his lung transplant. He's functioning. His oxygen level is, you know, 98% to 100% breathing with his new lungs, and he's doing fantastic. He'll go up to Denver once a week for the usual testing for several months, but everything looks great.
That was a double lung transplant.
Double lung transplant.
Wow.
Now, yeah, I got to tell you, yesterday, I went to Walmart with him, my wife and I were buying, him and his wife, a new outdoor grill, and it came in a box, and the guy wheeled it out to my truck, and it was pretty heavy. I was standing there, and I said, "I got a bad shoulders." He looked at my son, you know, figuring, "Well, help me lift this up." My son just lifted up his shirt and showed him all these staples across it.
He probably went, "I'll get it."
Yeah, he did.
Oh, my gosh.
He did, so.
Wow.
He'll get the staples out next week. 95 of them.
No kidding. Oh, my gosh. I just can't imagine.
Yeah, it's incredible.
I don't know what else you said.
Good. All right, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Administrative assistant items? Nothing. Public comment? Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss with the commissioners that are, that's not currently on the agenda? My gosh, very pleasant group today. Nice. All right.
They'll get surly before it's over.
Yeah, yeah. That may change. That may change. I can tell you that we will allow public comment during any items, whether unfinished, I don't believe we have any today, or new business. If it is a, an action item, and we'll be voting on that, I will take public comment. The chair will take public comment on that as well, but then we'll have another public comment opportunity at the end of the meeting, so.
I have a public comment.
Yes, ma'am. Hold on. Go.
So I noticed that we're going to talk about the EMS and what more.
Yes.
Would there be any chance that you could push us up ahead? Because we're just going to be about 10 minutes.
Who is "we"?
Keith Hood, Pat Bailey, and...
That has already been done. You stepped out, but we put you second in the agenda after approval of the vouchers.
We're sure to know that.
If I find out that you were doing that online during your workday on your computer in your office? Yeah, I did. I put you second.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. No problem. Anything else?
Thanks for informing me, boys.
Yeah. Hung you out to dry, didn't they? Unfinished business, gentlemen?
It's not actually unfinished business, but it goes along with something we discussed earlier. Did you get your new computer, or is it ordered?
It's ordered.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we have the tools to do our job.
Okay. We'll move on to new business, review of vouchers and signing the checks. I'm assuming we've all had an opportunity to look at them, and I assume we did. I mean, I know we had an opportunity. I'm assuming we did. What's the group's pleasure?
I'll move that, will you? Sorry?
It's okay. Go ahead. I'll second.
I didn't say it. I moved that we accept the vouchers for June 2019 as presented.
I'll second.
I didn't see anything out of ordinary.
Nothing I had.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the vouchers for the month of June 2019. Discussion. I had just a couple items. The vouchers today total $472,115.38 excluding any handwritten checks that will be subsequent to this. And then, I didn't really pursue this, but I did notice that the kids' council met, apparently, up at the Pines Ranch. No, just put it out there. I thought $400 is probably a lot of money to rent the facility, but I don't really know anything about it, so I don't know if you gentlemen had any privy information to that or what, but, and I'll tell you when you finish your comment, I'll tell you why I brought it up.
That's fine. I tend their com, their meetings, most of them, not all of them. Yeah, it sounds like a lot of money. It did, that did not jump out at me. I didn't notice it, but now that you're mentioning it, does sound like a lot of money to rent the facility.
Why did they have to do it there? I know you do it to a bull on average. You can do it for $25 an hour.
I didn't ask, and it certainly could have been a legitimate reason, but one of the, one of the things I thought when I first saw that was, I thought therein lies exactly why we need to have a large enough community meeting room in that Justice Center that could be accessed without going through the whole courthouse. Now, that's my opinion. I had a meeting in Buena Vista, huge facility, and they made sure when they built that that they had a community room with a little kitchen thing in it, refrigerator, sink, all open to the community, no charge. And I thought, we just can't lose sight of that, because if that's what they had to do, which I think there were other options, and I just remember my business why they did it, but... and I just remember my business, why they did it, but.
The last meeting that I attended with the architects, probably three weeks ago, it was just a small informal type, it wasn't really informal, it was a formal meeting, but I attended. That was one of the major concerns that we said, when you're doing your, your planning, we need a community room large enough to handle, I think we said a hundred people or something like that, and they made a note of it, so we'll see what comes back in August.
Yeah, I got you, remember I said we're doing a weekly activity report, a war with those guys? And I'll have that for the next meeting.
Good.
Maybe it'll be the second meeting.
That item was discussed, and I think that they were made sure to do it.
One question I had, so the four hundred bucks was, I know when we approved the budget for kids' council, if it was for wages, I didn't remember assigning that for meeting rooms.
Yeah, that's, it's pass-through money, it comes from their grant.
So did they, is it their grant money that they used to, just wanted to make sure?
Yep. Yeah, I signed the, signed and submitted the invoices for the month of June yesterday. They had to be done by the fifth of July, so, yeah, it's grant money. Further discussion on the vouchers, public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the vouchers submitted for June 2019, say aye.
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 Pose nay? Motion carries. Sir, would you like to initial those real quick? As quickly as we can possibly get to it, I'd like to move on to the airport discussion. Come forward, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Thanks for taking me.
You're welcome.
This is adequate to go to court in?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Otto has purchased two hangar leases, seventeen and eighteen. Mr. Otto would like to put one hangar, like a duplex, on both lots. They would share a common wall. Usually when that happens, they have five-foot setbacks, and we vacate the interior lot line. But since Mr. Otto would like to do two, we would keep them, instead of saying they were seventeen A, they would be seventeen and eighteen. The problem will be, and it's not a problem to me, is that if I was Mr. Otto, then I would could lease out my other hangar or sell it. That's how come we won't split the lots and stuff. I see no problem with it. My philosophy is let it happen, because we want this airport to succeed. It's not in the rules that, it is in the rules that they have to have five-foot setbacks on all four sides. I'm asking this board to allow this.
So it's a variance to the...
To weigh the five-foot setback.
The five-foot setback and let them...
Five-foot setback all the way around the building?
Uh-huh.
Or into end. We asked for a six-foot on one side, what does that mean?
That doesn't matter, he has to have five-foot minimum.
Yeah.
It's the interior wall that they would be sharing with both those hangars. Like I said, you're gonna have to, it would be a variance of their regs of a five-foot setback on all four sides. I don't see a problem with it, because I think that we need to make some considerable effort to accommodate this airport, to make it succeed.
So I agree, the five-foot, it indicates here in his email to you that this building would allow for six-foot setbacks on the sides, is that true?
On three sides, uh-huh.
And five-foot on the front and the back.
Correct.
So the five-foot setbacks you're talking about would be normally what would be where the marriage wall is gonna be between these two buildings.
Correct.
And that would have had a ten-foot gap there.
Correct.
Right. I don't have any angst about that at all, I do wonder about his statement here. He intends to keep half of the building, which would be on lot seventeen, for his use, and sell the other half that would be on at least lot eighteen, correct?
Uh-huh, or rent it.
He says sell.
Okay.
Um, how's that, is that gonna work, to sell half of a building that's on a leased lot, would be my question?
Well, then, his half would go to the person...
Then go to the new owner of half of the building.
Correct.
Just like it is with a normal building, you're still building on at least a piece of ground, right?
Well, sir, he's done his homework, I mean, his drafting and plans look fairly adequate, so. I would think that number one, I get it, and I know Commissioner Candace asked you this prior to the meeting, is this something the commissioners deal with, is this something that the, typically, the board, airport board would deal with? I know they and you handle the leases.
Okay, so now the airport board is now an advisory board, and then two weeks ago, they gave me the leases back. So now I'm doing the leases again.
So the issue today really is that five-foot setback on, that's being replaced by a marriage wall?
It's not an advisory board.
No, it's not, it's a board, airport board.
Oh, I, you're right, it's an airport board. And the reason why I'm asking this is because I issued the zoning permits for the airport, and then I have to look at the airport to make sure they got that five-foot setback and stuff. And at this point in time, he had spoken with Bob Jolly out at the airport, Mr. Otto, and it was basically stated, go talk to Jackie.
So the airport board is aware of this, and they feel that it's really a decision that you should make or we should make, okay?
I'll tell you why it's a good idea, for another reason.
Good move.
We have some businesses that are wanting to be there, as well as people with bigger airplanes. Existing lots are the small lots, and in order to have a bigger building, you gain ten feet plus another five feet on each side by torn together, and it allows for better growth, that's a, it's a good thing.
On a bigger airplane, do you wanna make a vote?
You know, I, I was just gonna say, I, I question our, the validity of us actually taking an action on this other than maybe a consent that we're okay with it, because it wasn't posted on the agenda.
Well, and that's a very good point.
Yeah, how do you want to handle it?
That's a really good point. Procedurally, I'm not sure we can vote, since it's not on the agenda, although, although, conceptually, I personally have absolutely no issue with this at all, I think it's great, it's gonna help our airport, it'll bring theoretically two new hangars in, two more airplanes, so, but I think procedurally...
What do you think, Clint?
Let's just treat this as an informational meeting from her, this is her job, it's discretionary with her, just let her go.
Take action.
Yeah, I mean, if you would voice some strong disapproval with it, then we'd have to have it on for a vote, but otherwise, just tell her to do what she thinks is best for the airport.
However, my only thought on that would be, are we giving Jackie authority to amend?
Grant waivers.
Grant the waiver, and I'm fine if we are.
The actual five-foot setback is a board issue, they invented that.
No, it's not.
I know, but they, we, they uphold that as well.
It was a special use permit, so.
Oh, okay.
So it's the, it's the planning permission.
They revised that, and they kept that, so we have to.
If it works for Jackie, I would recommend that we put this on the agenda for the second, if we can vote approval on this variance for the five-foot setback, if we need it before then. I'd say that's too bad, they're gonna have to wait.
No, do I have to be present?
No. No, that's, you presented your case today clearly and to the point, I just wanna be procedurally correct.
I appreciate your, your approach.
If you guys are all right with that.
Yeah.
Mr. Meredith, could you put that on the agenda early on the second?
So, let me give you the rundown on the second, we have the audit, review, and then the first reading of the...
Okay, let's do this prior to the audit, then, let's do it right off the bat.
It'll not take two minutes.
Bring it to the table as a motion, and we'll vote on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, next item on the agenda is discussion of the emergency medical services service in the Wetmore area. I asked Meredith to put this on as a discussion item, if something other than that happens today, I'd be surprised, but I don't, I don't, as a commissioner, expect to take action, I just wanted to have a discussion, and I appreciate...
With just a summary, or what, what's your intent on it?
Well, just, I just think we need to talk about this, that's plain and simple, so. If, I think we're all aware, but if you're not, we have basically ambulance coverage in the Wetmore area that was being provided by the Florence EMS, and they informed the board and the hospital district and others that they would no longer be doing that, I believe as of June thirty...
June twenty-third, this past Sunday.
Yeah.
So clarify, that's the primary response, and you guys are always the secondary?
Correct.
And so when they abandon that, there's no primary, it's just whoever decides they can go, goes, what's...
Well, yeah, I think that's part of the issue.
It's part of the issue.
Okay.
Part of the question.
Certainly not an understood thing now that somebody else is gonna do that. It's, for all intents and purposes, we do not have any planned coverage for that portion of the county. It is by statute the commissioner's responsibility, sorry, that we have the authority to deal with EMS coverage for the county. The commissioners, prior commissioners, have delegated the responsibility back to the hospital district. So that's kind of where we're at now, that we really don't have scheduled coverage for Wetmore. West Custer County Hospital District has said that they will no longer run as primary coverage. You correct me anytime that I get off the rails here, because I'm not trying to speak for you, I'm trying to relay as I understand it, that the district, hospital district wouldn't, hospital district's responsibility of managing EMS would no longer cover Wetmore as a primary or first call. Go ahead.
Well, you're saying will, will no longer as primary, we never were as primary, so I want to correct that.
They never were the primary, but they would not now become the primary cover either, correct? I mean, it's, just because that happened doesn't mean now, well, now you're going to automatically be there in first call, primary coverage, that's not the case.
That, that, that's the discussion.
So the discussion is, how in the heck do you cover it, then? You got two people that aren't gonna be primary, somebody, somebody from Wetmore calls 911, where does that call go? Does it go to Wetmore, does it go to here?
It depends.
It goes to our dispatch center here in Custer County.
Right, and so we just say, you look and you see if you got time to do it, and then you go, or you call Florence, and how does it work? How do you coordinate this?
So Florence has already said they're not going to respond at all to Custer County.
Ever? They're not, they're not gonna take a second, they're never gonna cross the county line.
They don't have the staff.
You should have gone.
They don't have these staff, they're volunteers, they have seven people left, they are done with Custer County.
So prior to them not being able to respond, what would happen? A call would drop in Wetmore, it would come to our Custer County Sheriff's Dispatcher Center. They would call FreeCom, they would see where it was at, they would call FreeCom. FreeCom would then call Florence to see if they had a crew available. If Florence did, they would send their volunteer department into Wetmore.
Are you saying Florence will never have a crew available?
No, they've indicated that very clearly, they are done.
So they're not gonna do that either, they might call, right, that would be a procedure.
Right, so now, now the procedure is dispatch is going to contact us if we have a second crew available to come and cover our hospital district area that we're responsible for, then we will respond. If not, they're gonna call Pueblo AMR to try and respond to that area. Or they're gonna get an air medical, which is reach, flight for life.
Okay.
That, that's what we have in process now.
Has Pueblo ever responded?
They have come up and got patients from Florence.
So they're like a secondary, and they've used to hear that, possible.
They're actually the very same distance that we are.
It's twenty-six miles.
Either way, we're on the other.
Yes, sir. My comment, this has kept me awake tonight. This is Custer County, we have people in Custer, and I understand the hospital district, I understand where your line is, I saw your map, I get it. And your attitude is, it's not our district, we're not gonna do it, maybe, okay? But that's not the issue, in my opinion. The issue, in my opinion, this is Custer County, we need to take care of our Custer County residents. I don't care where that line is delineating between hospital district and not hospital district, somebody in Wetmore called 911, an ambulance needs to roll. Now, my feeling is, and we asked you the last time we had this discussion, we asked you to come to us and say, here's our solution to fix this. Do you have that, or have you thought about that?
They did.
Or are you still putting it back on us to try and come up with a solution?
So with all due respect, we have provided on several occasions some options, some discussion options. And again, with all due respect, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna regret saying it, it, it is indeed your responsibility as Board of County Commissioners for EMS coverage for the entire county. We, we do, the reason that there's a line, if you will, is because taxpayers within the hospital district are taxed that three mil.
I get it.
So, and, and the feedback that I've received so far, some good, some bad, is, why would you take an ambulance from this service, this area that's paid, that I'm paying into, take it to Wetmore, provide service to people that are not contributing that three mil? Again, I'm just saying to you, this is, I, I understand what you're saying, but there's been so much misinformation in this community about what the mil levy and all that stuff is.
So if you're saying this is the county issue, and I concur with you, it is the county issue, okay? I concur with you, this is our problem, but you are EMS, it falls under the West Custer County Hospital District, correct? And you receive the mil levy for the ambulance?
For the hospital district, yes, sir. But not for outside of the district, that is correct.
I understand that, I understand that. I think we need a comprehensive look at this ambulance service, and maybe this needs to move away from West Custer County Hospital District, move it under the auspices of the Board of County Commissioners, and let's solve this problem. They don't wanna solve it, we need to, and I'm not saying you don't want to. I, I understand your business is compassionate, and I'm not saying you're not compassionate. I understand you need to have an ambulance available to go around the corner, and if it goes to somewhere in Wetmore, you could be out of service for a couple of hours or more, and these people didn't pay for the service. I fully understand that. Getting them to pay for the service would take, it's a tabor issue, it would take a tax increase, which certainly would be appropriate. And to put on a ballot saying, folks, in this particular area, outside this, this line where you are, and I, in my mind, I still am having a hard time understanding why that is segregated from the rest of Custer County Hospital District. I don't understand it, I understand it was way before all of us, so I'm not going there.
It was thirty-one years ago, yes, sir.
I understand, I understand, I understand, but we cannot turn our back on these people. We have to have a solution, that ambulance, not that, an ambulance has to go, and I don't care if it's a scrape, knee, and they go, never mind, we want, we put Mercure or Chrome on it, if they still use that these days, and a Band-Aid, and we're fine, go back, and we're not using you, and you just came out of service for an hour and a half to go way down there and all the way back to say, we don't need it anymore. Okay, I get all that, but that's part of the service provided, I mean, it's just unfortunate, but that's the way that... So ultimately, properly, it's gonna have to go on a, on a ballot. Running a, a separate election, a special election for something is enormously expensive. It would cut, it would be cheaper for the county just to pay for service, if we could find someone who would walk in and go, I will do it, and I will charge you five thousand dollars a month until such time you come up, whatever.
Yay.
But I'm...
Let me help you here.
Yeah, please do.
I agree with what you've said. I understand the district was set up, and the mil levy was for that, and by a group of wise people, apparently, that said, the district's gonna end here, and I don't know what they were thinking about Wetmore, we don't know. Bottom line is, they've been taken care of by volunteers to pay out of their pots to get somebody down there. One of the things she proposed was paying additionally for, to guarantee that the West County District was covered the way it's supposed to be, and be able to do Wetmore. That costs X, because you hire another crew, or maybe you buy an ambulance, I don't know. And so we have options, like you said, it's our responsibility, so we can figure out if we're gonna do that, then we're paying it out of the county general fund, or we paying it out of whatever, are we gonna raise a tax of our own for that little district, whatever? We have options to do that, is what I'm hearing.
Agreed, that was what their proposal was.
Right, and so that was...
Or come up with a different option.
Or come up, but I would never think that we would be wanting to re-tax the same district to go off and do, I mean, if it's something that we're gonna have to enlarge our, and one of the reasons I agree is because the, the population has grown quite a bit since thirty years ago, down in more and more...
In Wetmore, you're talking about?
Down that, that San Isabel, Wetmore.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it is my understanding that that share, that portion of the, of the county that is not in the hospital district is not taxed for that three percent.
That's right.
So it's only appropriate for them to be paying their fair share like everybody else, I get that. And what are we gonna do if they say, we turn it down? Are we gonna turn around and say, I'm sorry, you're on your own? See, that's, that's an issue. I can't do that.
My understanding, gentlemen, is the history of the Wetmore area, and if anybody in this room is different, please speak up, that they have continually been asked over and over again, you wanna participate, you wanna participate in paying taxes so that you can have EMS service in your community. And my understanding is the answer has been no, that they don't wanna pay, they don't, they'll just take their chances, if you will. That's, and if anybody knows otherwise, please speak up and let me know, but that's...
This is information I'm hearing for the first time.
Oh, okay.
And I fully believe that you're correct, I just didn't know this, okay? But, now it's cri, before it was, we'd like you to pay your share, but even if you don't, an ambulance is gonna show up at your door. Very different than, you need to pay your fair share, or no ambulance is gonna show up at your door. I would suspect wise people would sit there and go, a three percent mil levy, and I got ambulance service, I better approve this. So ultimately, that's where it needs to go. Ultimately, it could be at the next general election if we choose to do that, okay? However, we need coverage between today and the day we have some solution.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
...view on this, I don't live in Wetmore, but I live in West Cliff, and how many of us travel that direction on a regular basis through Wetmore on the highway to go do our shopping down in Pueblo or wherever, or go to Denver? I'm a, I pay into that bill, right, 'cause I'm in the district and I pay for that service. Something happens to me or my family in Wetmore, and you're telling me I'm in my county, I'm in Custer County, paying for this ambulance service, and they're not gonna come?
Exactly what we're telling you.
That's exactly what we're discussing.
So, on a first call, priority, that's correct. So a couple of things from my perspective, and I think eventually I'll get around to maybe touching on the topic that you bring up. In 2014, citizens were asked to vote on ballot issue four A. In 2014, citizens were asked to vote on ballot issue 4A. We talked about this yesterday at the Board of Directors meeting for the, for the clinic. Now I'm gonna call it the clinic, because I get tired of saying West Custer County Hospital District. To me, they're one and the same, I get the distinctions, I think, but I just run out of breath. So I called it the clinic. I, I want to say this, that probably in the last three or four meetings, the word "you" and some finger pointing has occurred to Ms. Drew. I don't believe Lisa is going to make a decision about this on her own as the Executive Director of the Hospital District.
Absolutely not, absolutely not.
So I want to say this to you personally, and then to the group, when I think any of us say "you," we don't mean "you." We mean the Hospital District, we mean the Board of Directors, really, you're representing them.
Yes, I am.
So please, accept my apology if I say, well, I know that you said, and it's not you. If I want to quote you, I will say that, but...
Okay, I appreciate that. And if you have a jar of Vaseline, I'll take that.
Yeah, because I certainly sat in this meeting and thought, oh my gosh, the average person is gonna think that Ms. Drew has the last say-so, and that's why she's taking the heat. She's not, she's carrying the message. So when we say "you," we mean the district.
The people that I work for.
At least, I think you do, in your comments this morning, obviously.
And I've mentioned that to you yesterday, I mean, multiple times.
Yes, and I appreciate that.
I pick on you because you're the director.
Right.
You're the spokesperson.
Correct.
You are to us, the clinic.
Correct.
And I even couched my comments to you yesterday, saying, please don't take this personally.
And I appreciate that, sure.
And I did sincerely. And I went up to you after the meeting and said it again.
Yes, you did, and I appreciate that, yep.
So I just want to make that point of distinction. I want to read, there's some language in here that doesn't really matter to this conversation, but the ballot said, shall Custer County taxes be increased up to $280,000 annually, ad valorem, and so on. By a property tax mil levy imposed at the rate of up to 3 mils, right now, that basically is $300,000, because we're at $10 million. Or such lesser rate as the West Custer County Hospital District Board of Directors shall determine. And dedicated solely to pay the cost of emergency medical ambulance services. And shall not be used to defray any other obligations of the hospital district. I brought this up at the meeting last night. Nowhere in this language does it say to pay... to solely pay the cost of emergency medical ambulance services within the hospital district. It does not say that. Now, let, let me be fair, real quick. This ballot that I'm holding in front of me was printed and mailed to the voters in Precinct 1. This is the only ballot I was able to get my hands on. It appears that Precinct 3 also voted on this, because I went back and researched the vote tallies, there were no vote tallies from Precinct 2, which is Wetmore, but there were in Precinct 1 and 3.
Did they give it to 3?
So, would, would, I can't answer that. I'm, I'm laying this out so that I can say it would lead one to think that the voters in Precinct 2 did not get this initiative on their ballot, but I can't sit here and tell you that.
Because it was Custer District, isn't it?
So I brought it up to the Board of Directors last night. The implication, and this is where I'm eventually gonna get to with counsel, the implication is that people knew that they were voting on a mil levy for, to go to ambulance service within those two precincts, that's not really true, because it's really within the hospital district's boundaries, that, I think, was the implication, but it sure as hell doesn't say that in this initiative, which I take exception to. I think this was a poorly written initiative. It does not say that this ambulance service is only for the hospital district. My job is to try to represent the citizens of this county. I, I'm gonna challenge this on their behalf, to say, this says, shall Custer County taxes be increased to help pay for the cost of medical ambulance service. Doesn't say ambulance service in the district. And a judge may say, Flower, you're all wet. The implication's very clear, and that's what we're sticking with, and that's fine, that's, so it... I'm gonna try my best to try to... I don't want to use the word "force," but to force our EMS to continue to provide service to Wetmore until such time that if we put that on a ballot, and this, your guys are exactly right, we could put it on a ballot, they could vote it down.
For that district.
The Tom Flower part of me wants to say, then heck with you, you're on your own down there. If you don't want to pay the taxes, to hell with you. But I can't do that as a commissioner. We're gonna have to, if they don't want to pay the taxes, we gotta figure out some other way to provide coverage down there. Part of the Wetmore residents that I've talked to have said, well, we'll use flight as an ambulance service. And I maintain, you'll do that once, and then your insurance companies will drop you like a hot potato, and that'll be the end of your reliance. I just don't think that's a viable...
Not viable.
Approach to that. I know Commissioner Cannon wants to respond.
Oh, I just wanted to ask a question.
As does undersheriff Bar, go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify one thing, because I agree with you there, we got a case. Yeah, that's an initiative that was put there to be, in addition to what the hospital district was already responsible for, for the budget that they had prior to that. It must have included prior to that ambulance service, you must have a budget line in the old, before that initiative in 14, that said, we got ambulances, we're gonna go perform at services, right? So, I would like to know what the total budget is with this, added to whatever you have, it should have been in addition to the ambulance service you were providing out of the existing budget. So I wanted to know if that, and it should be the case, maybe you don't know, then, I would like to see that, of that total budget, and I would like to understand why you can't make it a priority into Wetmore, if, as a, as an option.
So, I think I understand your question.
Without this initiative, you are providing service already.
Right, and what, my understanding is, what that initiative did was restrict 3 mils.
Right, in addition.
To EMS.
Right.
And our total mil levy is 7.908, that's our total mil levy, 7.908.
For the whole district.
For the whole district.
But how much of that originally was for random?
Maybe I can help with the question. Prior to receiving the 3 mil, how much money did the hospital district allocate to ambulance service?
Of the 4 mils, or whatever they were...
Right, right, whatever it was.
I have no idea.
And then, once you received the additional 3 mil, it increased that budget by 3.
Because I'm afraid if you looked at that as a budget...
I'm just answering...
Right, right, the truth is, I'm not sure. I do, I do know that when it, volunteer service, when it was a volunteer service, I believe it wasn't part of the hospital district at that point, it wasn't. Was it?
Yes.
Okay, so it was, so I, I do not know that answer.
Yeah, and...
Now, we do have online, but they're not, they probably, we probably still do have the budgets online, because we just did a new website. So all of the budgets from the prior years...
I pull up 15, look at it.
I, I mean, you can pull it up right here, look at it to see, because it's all there. You've got EMS, and, and the clinic, or something.
Before, I'm sorry, I meant...
Yeah.
I have a question as far as precinct, where's, Precinct 1 is, I guess, here in Wetmore, perhaps?
Precinct 1 is basically the southern half of the county.
Okay, and where's Precinct 3?
Precinct 3 is the northwestern portion of the county, basically, north central to northwest, and Precinct 2 is basically the eastern, northeastern.
From the top of the Wets, basically.
So that would make sense, that that would follow the hospital district boundaries, why?
One would think, but it doesn't. I looked, they do not correlate. See, part of district, part of Precinct 1 is paying this 3, this 3 mil, sorry.
Precinct 1's paying for it.
Precinct 2.
2.
Part of Precinct 2.
Wetmore is 2.
Right, well, yeah. Well, the line is Highway 165.
Correct.
And, for the district, but not the precinct. There are people in Precinct 2 paying this 3 mils, because they're in the district. So I get it, I'm not stupid, I don't think. I think the implication was, if, if the West Custer County Hospital District is gonna set the rate, that's the only time in this initiative that it was mentioned, the name the hospital district was mentioned, then I think there was probably maybe some implications there, I don't agree with them, that, that this rate that is only gonna apply within the district. I say, no, I don't read that in here, that's where I take exception. I'm not, I think we've all been operating under the assumption that because the district set the rate, and most likely, I can't prove this today, that precinct, the, most of the Precinct 2 did not vote on it, then it was only for the hospital district. I think that was the implication. Sure as heck isn't spelled out there.
I would, I would believe this, again, I, I don't know, that would, that's what would make the most logical...
Further compound.
...as well, because I would think the people that lived in, within those, within the confines, if you will, were the ones that received that ballot, and if you weren't that, in there, you wouldn't have, but I...
But I'm betting a buck fifty, 165, the guys west of that, they're out, they're in that district, they didn't get to vote, and they got, I don't know if, they must be being taxed.
West of the...
West of 165, which gets them out.
Well, sure do.
And how are you going to decide that you're gonna go down there and up to the west side, but not to the east side, you see? It's crazy.
I, just reading it for the first time, without really doing a lot of absorption into what it says, I think Karen Flower has an excellent point. The delineation between West Custer County District and not is not mentioned there, is not part of it, is a 3% mil levy to provide ambulance service to the county is the way I'm, my initial review of this is. And if that's the case, I think you're obligated to perform emergency service down here. Now, saying that, if that happens to be a true statement, and I don't know if it is, that's why I just handed it to legal counsel, if that's true, and you come to us and say, hang on a second, that's fine, but we're going bankrupt if we do that, and I know you've probably, you haven't exactly said that, but that's a whole nother issue. First, we determine that it is your responsibility, and then you come to us to say, we can't afford it, help us out. That's a whole new discussion that I'm willing to have and will discuss at any time, because I understand how expensive this process is, how time consuming it is, how spread out we are.
I'm gonna pile on to that, let me pile on that before I forget it, but it's unfair to districts 2 and, or 3 and 1, to be paying for people that aren't paying, and that's something that we would have to deal with. If we, we go down that road, because, because that's, if there's not enough money, then we have to raise the money, and that's something we have to discuss at some point.
I agree completely with that comment.
And philosophically, I do not, and I'll get to that after we...
So for the record, though, because I heard this earlier in here, we're talking about the 20-mile marker east...
Yes.
To the Fremont County line and the Pueblo County line, that does not include San Isabel.
No.
San Isabel's covered by RYE, correct?
Well, they go up to 15.
Right, so, not all of it, but...
We're talking Wetmore, we're not talking San Isabel here. That, that's not...
For all intents and purposes. And I wanted to go back real quick to one other thing about the, where does the 911 calls go? And I don't know this, but if they're on the northern edge of Custer County in the Wetmore area, wouldn't those 911 calls route out of Canyon City?
Just like we talked in the 911 board meeting yesterday, it depends where their cell phone, or, basically where their cell phone comes from. If it's their home phone number, then obviously it's in the area of the county.
And that's why I brought it up, because just because you live in Wetmore, you call 911, does not mean it's coming to our district.
If you go to FreeCom, you go here just...
Literally, you can be in downtown West Cliff, and it might ping off a tower, and you might get Pueblo's 911.
Right, because I think everybody thinks if they live here and call 911, it goes here, not necessarily.
There's not 100% guarantee that that's...
When I called, I was, a car, I had passed a car that had just run off Harts Gravel, there were people rushing to the aid of the people, and there was no cell service, I said, I'm gonna go down until I get cell service, and I'll call 911. That's where I called it. When I got cell service in, in Wetmore, and after the lady took all the information, it was very polite, I said, is this our, is this the West Cliff? She said, no, I'm in Pueblo. And I said, thank you very much. So, I was in Wetmore when it happened.
Sidebar.
So let me just transfer them to our dispatch center.
They said, somebody just went down to call, didn't say who it was, and when we were sorting that out, Ms. Lisa drove up and said, obviously you two are dressed to go to some kind of function, you go ahead and I'll set this seat, so... Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mike?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment, I've lived in Wetmore for 40 years, and the question of paying for ambulance service is never, I'm not aware of that question ever being posed to me directly. So, my knowledge of working wrecks in that canyon, both State Patrol and here, for over 30 years, the, whether the MOUs were in writing or just verbal agreements, it was, who can get there the quickest? How can we help whoever fights help?
Right.
And that's why we had the agreements with RYE to come over as far as they did. Florence said, we're going to the Fremont-Custer line, which is 1 mile north of Wetmore, it is stupid for us not to go into Wetmore. So they always covered everything from McKenzie Junction East, and RYE come over, and it wasn't about whose responsibility, it was about who needs the service, and who's gonna get it the quickest.
And, and that's a great point, Mike, and it's a good segue into what I said just a minute ago about, I take exception to what Commissioner Cannon said, I don't agree when he said, it's unfair for the taxpayers of these two, let's just call them precincts, that's not exactly correct, but we get the idea, to pay for ambulance service to cover Wetmore when they're not paying for it. And I, I don't agree with that, and here's why. Philosophically, if I live in this county, and I don't own one stitch of ground, so I pay no property tax, I have every right to send my kid to this school, and the taxpayers are gonna pay for that. I think the same principle applies. I don't, I'd like to see Wetmore paying their fair share. But as a society, I, I think it goes beyond that, that we have a societal responsibility to take care of everyone, doesn't matter whether they pay or not. And that's probably where I'm gonna flesh out to say, to the hospital district, not to you, to the hospital district, don't, I don't give a crap whether they're paying or not, I think morally and, and societally, we have a responsibility to go down there and take care of those people, and we have to figure out a way to pay for that.
Well, and following up on that, I think one of the reasons that that question has never been, to my knowledge, ever been posed, is because there wasn't a need for it, because Florence said...
It was being covered.
Yeah.
It was being taken care of.
It was theirs, so, and just by exclusion, you looked at that ballot, in District 2, where we weren't allowed to vote on the ambulance.
Right.
Because they didn't put it on the ballot.
Which, again, we're talking, it's all started back 30 years ago. I'd love to know why in the hell it was, and I'd love to know why the hospital district was drawn where it was. That was something I was gonna ask counsel if he could do some research to, but go ahead, sir, and then I'll get to Commissioner Cannon.
I take some exception to what you said about whether you own or don't own, pay tax or not pay tax, you have a right to go to school, however, the rules need to be fair for everybody. And the rules to be fair would be, if you do own property and you expect ambulance service, you should be paying 3%. So I take exception to the people in Wetmore who are property owners, not paying the same share that other, other people in Districts 1 and 3 are paying, so I disagree with what you're saying. I understand if you're not a property owner, you're not paying that 3%, and that's a choice, that's just what we live with, but if you are, you need to be treated equally with the rest of the people who pay a property tax, so...
And I couldn't argue against that thought.
So I just wanted to clarify that, why I disagreed with that.
Yeah, that's where I was, and in addition, Tom, you gotta remember, there's a lot of people that rent places, and landowners get money, and they pay for the taxes, and people that rent places, and landowners get money, and they pay for the taxes, and that's how you get it, in other ways, from people that are, and now, yes, there's an indigenous, species out there of totally bankrupt people that are on welfare, that we have, and I, we all have a moral obligation to do the best we can for our citizens, period, and the people that are there. But, that doesn't excuse the people that, that have the wherewithal to have, and they have the property to pay the tax, because there's somebody that got to pay for it, you can't make it up.
I agree. So I think that we had a ballot initiative at the next election, that said, if you are a property owner, and, and, council boss could write this, in, in the gist of it would be, if you're a property owner and not paying three percent, you will be assessed an additional three percent for ambulance service, as the remaining, and whatever percent it is, seventy-eight, ninety-five percent of the county is paying.
All of Custer County is under the same.
Yes, so it's equitable to all landowners who are receiving services, because the bottom line is, services must take place, they must.
But I still want to see the previous budget, because there's got to be other money.
Go ahead, Ms. Jackie.
Well, I was just going to say the same thing, that every piece of property is taxed. I'm renting, so I'm paying my taxes, but I'm paying them through my landlord. So, for the school, for everything.
And sales tax.
Because she's, because she's passing that cost on to me. So, you know, so to say that they aren't paying it is not, is not exactly true.
Maybe the word directly was not.
Was not directly. Get it? Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll agree with the guy from Wetmore. Historically, Wetmore has never been covered by this ambulance service. And even when the county ran the ambulance service before the Hospital District was formed, because the Hospital District, they, sir, they ran the ambulance service, they owned the ambulances, and furnished the crews. It was all volunteer service. When the Hospital District was formed, the county commissioners transferred all those ambulances to the district, and then the district was responsible.
To take care of it.
For providing the ambulance service. We didn't expand the ambulance service beyond what it historically had been.
Interestingly enough, law enforcement not included, probably you three are the only ones that even lived in this county when that happened. This was all pre-eighty-six when I moved here.
Well, see, I was the first chair.
So you were on.
I was the first chair of the Hospital District when it was formed.
Why did they not, why is it West Custer County and not Custer County Hospital District? How's come Wetmore got?
Because they didn't want in it.
Didn't want to pay.
No, I think that.
Well, their service was on the floor. See, they were all being serviced out of floors.
So then it felt like they needed it, probably.
They just didn't want to pay double tax.
Because if they didn't want it, then they would have said no on a ballot, probably.
Now, were they taxed, Jackie? They weren't taxed from Fremont.
No, they weren't. But they were getting the service, why would I want to be taxed?
They were getting it free.
Yeah, they're getting it anyway.
But now they have no choice, they.
But that's not, that's not a valid argument. I don't have any kids in school, but I still pay school tax.
I know, but they were getting it for free.
Because that's what we do as a society.
And then if you're a layman, and you're sitting there, and you're doing a ballot, and you're voting for this three mil, you have no clue that it doesn't include Wetmore, that it doesn't include, uh, San Isabel?
Yeah, they thought it was Custer County.
The only people that have any clue that it didn't include Wetmore is people that pay attention, most people just say, oh, yeah. So.
I agree. Go ahead, sir.
Well, in years past, precinct two, that district boundary, was one sixty-five and east. I was on the committee that redrew boundary lines, I don't remember what year it was, John Coleman was the commissioner of it. And it was only because it wasn't a balanced population between the three districts, and so it was mandated by the legislature to restructure the district boundaries, so that there was a more equal population in those areas. So that's one of the reasons that the district down there kind of ran with the same area that the ambulance service did. Another thing, living in Wetmore, if I need to go to the hospital or medical services, I'm going to go to Pueblo or Canyon, only because it's closer for me, and that's the way most, everybody's thinking. And, and that was probably, I'm going to guess, that was one of the issues when they were forming the Hospital District, is how many people from there are actually using the Hospital District. I mean, I guess you had to draw boundaries somewhere. But I also know a lot of people down there that drive up here because they like what goes on.
Now, point of clarification, and we talked about it yesterday, I don't think a lot of people understand this. Currently, there is not a transport, an ambulance transport, that ever comes to the clinic. They do not accept ambulance transports here. If you get on an ambulance, you are going somewhere, you are not coming to West Cliff. Now, that's changed over the last two or three years, probably five, four.
It's been that way since I've been here for five.
At least five years.
Okay, all right. And I don't think everybody understands that, in this county. I don't know, I could be wrong. But I have a lot of people say, what are you talking about? When I mention that to them.
Yeah, I bet, oh, sorry, they accepted it right.
They're not licensed as a receiving facility, that's why we can't transport to the clinic.
They were.
Yes, they were.
They changed all that. The Hospital District did, because they didn't want to deal with it. There's no, I mean, you can sugarcoat that all you want. Yeah. Um, go ahead.
I'm sorry, let me, let me, just, we'll kind of cut to the chase. So, we know this has not been a problem, up until Florence says, we're not going to serve you. We understand this is a significant problem, because we don't have the equipment and manpower to take up that slack that we didn't have before. We were backup if we had equipment available, but we were not the primary. Being the primary dedicate, I mean, ideally, we could have an ambulance down at, you know, somewhere down there, so that you could make it quicker.
And that was one of the options, I would say.
I read it, I read it, I laughed when I saw the cost, but, I didn't, I mean, I giggled to myself going, oh my God, where'd that come from? Where would that come from? The suggestion is valid, it's just, you know, everything comes down to money, as it always does. So it's a new situation. So, Mike, I'm a hundred percent with you, why would I vote for it? I already got coverage, I don't need it, why am I paying for it? But now the world has changed. Now the world is, you don't have coverage, so you're going to have belly up.
That's why I said, I'm not sure that the question's ever been posed, because it wasn't necessary.
And I get that completely, and now it's going to have to be, and, is that, but here's the question I have, it's, it's not densely populated. If you got the three mil levy for the area out in Custer County, outside the West Custer County Hospital District, is that sufficient cash for you, inflow of money, for you to provide the services that need to be provided at the level that we need to provide it?
I think the numbers that we had got from J D was like about fourteen thousand dollars, I believe.
So the potential annual additional income loss if we were annexed is thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents.
Fourteen thousand dollars?
Fourteen, yeah.
Which for us to respond from here would more than adequately be okay. But if we were wanting to take an ambulance down there, and, we have three ambulances.
Yes, we could serve those.
So we could definitely leave two here in the, in the, the bigger county, and put one down in the Wetmore area, and then, our thoughts were initially was to staff a two-person crew, seven days a week, day shift only, like seven A to seven P, nine A to nine P. I don't think it needs to be twenty-four seven, which is a lot more money, like we're talking three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars to do that.
Fifteen thousand dollars doesn't sound like one ambulance driver. I mean, I don't know how this is going to be a significant change in your operation, influx of fourteen grand, that's going to solve this issue. I mean.
It won't, clearly, it will not. If anybody thinks that is, there are another plan.
We have accidents in the middle of the night down there.
Right, yeah. So, a couple of things, and then I'll get to you, ma'am. Lisa did send us, I think it was three, basically, maybe a fourth recommendation, or some suggestions, saying, we've talked about it, these are things you might consider, and I want to throw one of those out, Commissioner Prince alluded to it. He said he laughed to myself, I, I just turned red in the face and want to start cussing at people. Now, Lisa suggested, gave us the suggestion, consider. I'm not telling, I'm not saying you thought this is what we should do, we asked you to come up with some suggestions, this is one of them, and I want everybody to know that, based on their figures, they believe they could staff an ambulance for twelve hours a day, day or night shift, but preferably day shift, in Wetmore, at the cost of forty thousand dollars a month. That's almost a half a million dollars a year, and that's when my face turned red, and I thought, what in the hell do we think we're doing here? That is ridiculous. And I will say that, I think, gentlemen, if you ever want to consider that, you can count on me saying, this is ludicrous and it's ridiculous. We could buy a damn ambulance and staff it and hire somebody from out of county for a half a million dollars a year, so.
Well, we're, seventeen hundred thousand dollars a year is paying for it in the first place, the main service, so how come it's that, two-thirds of that for one more ambulance?
So it was based off the hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
Right, which is also ludicrous, but that's my opinion.
That's.
I know, that's hard, based on your.
That's the cost.
Yep, I get it.
When you're talking about a rig, crew.
Understood.
Um, lack of crew, which means overtime of crew, um, so if you post an ambulance in Wetmore, again, this, none of this stuff is, uh, the buck stops here, it's for discussion, it's what, what, what makes sense. But this, these are our costs. I thought it was important for you to realize what our costs were. That's why Teresa put all this stuff for overtime hours, what it really costs, what this, what that. If we have an ambulance that is staged, or parked, if you will, in Wetmore, or in the east side of the county, we're not driving it back and forth, it's there. Our employees perhaps would come from Florence, or come from Pueblo, and work there. That is a potential. Again, we're open to whatever suggestion might be there, but if you could post an ambulance in the east side of the county, then you're not putting fifty-two miles on the rig every day, just driving back and forth and back and forth.
We did that with the fire department just recently, with some of the fire trucks.
Like a substation, they have a substation.
We actually park fire trucks in areas, so that in an event of an emergency, a crew could rush out there, get out there.
Right, so an ambulance would need to be locked somewhere safely, like.
So if you bought a used ambulance and parked it somewhere.
We don't need to buy, I mean, we have three ambulances, we have three.
But not at forty thousand dollars a month, we don't. That's my point. That is not on the table for me.
I hear you, and like I said, we, I, my understanding is that we're going to discuss this and talk about it. It's, what, what do you think's fair?
Okay, so what are next steps?
It's like.
We're going to have a meeting, we're really going to get down to brass tacks, costs, real examples?
A lot of this was driven by the fact, we went from a all-volunteer ambulance corps, now we're going to pay them, and now we're talking overtime. That's how far we've escalated, away from what is right for the community. I don't expect people to do it for nothing, although my wife did for a bazillion years, so did Jackie Bubbs, and everybody else that served in those years. And so now, you don't hear any of the thing about, and I know you believe in this, because I, I just know that, that we need to do what's right for the citizens of our county. This isn't about making money, it's not about creating jobs, it's not about all of that stuff. I truly believe that you feel that way, or you wouldn't be in the field you're in.
Absolutely, you're right.
Uh, that we owe it to our citizens to do what's right for our society. Maybe that doesn't include overtime. Maybe that doesn't include all this other stuff, I don't know that. But I got all kind of worked up when I got to thinking that the district would suggest we would consider paying forty thousand dollars a month to staff one of our ambulances in Wetmore, that we've done for years in this county, on a volunteer basis. That's how, I was just amazed at how, that's how quickly we've escalated, to let money drive it all, and that's where I got worked up. Yes, sir.
I know this is a long-term problem, it's going to take something to solve it, but has there been any discussion about I G A between us, Fremont, with their volunteer ambulance service? I mean, it's volunteer.
Well, Fremont's is not volunteer, they're paid, but Florence, Florence said, we're done.
Florence, sorry.
No discussion.
I know that. But, they're, they're a volunteer, but they have, uh, equipment, they have costs, they have to get that money from somebody.
Right.
To maintain that service.
But we pay them.
And, and they said to us.
In the short term, can we help them help us, till you get this figured out?
And it's not really a money thing with them, it's a personnel thing, they do not have the people. And I thought, well, it's supposed to money at Florence. And Florence said, it's not about money, man, it, we don't have the people. Now, I wanted to ask you about the quick question, because, and I also want to bring attention to this, that you are getting ready to start your paramedic schooling?
On Monday, sir, yes.
On Monday? Congratulations, that is huge, that is trying to be part of the solution.
We have two.
And, I forget, how long is that? Year and a half?
It's about, it's about a year, um, so you go July through August, and then August through December, and then January through April, now they changed it, and then there's five hundred ride hours after that, that I have to give for free to another service.
So two years, basically, okay, all right. I applaud you for that. My wife went through it, I understand the ramifications of going through that business. It's, you give to, you've got nothing left to give, and then you expect.
And you give some more.
Yeah, and then you give some more, and, I get it. But, anyway, the other person, if you don't mind, can you throw a name out?
Justine Beach.
Oh?
Yeah, Justine.
Didn't know that.
Yep, they're both starting preschool one.
Yeah, okay, so I applaud both of you. Uh, I agree, it's not going to be a short, a quick fix for a long-term problem, but we got to start doing something. Now, personally, I happen to agree, we need to look at a ballot initiative to give the folks in Wetmore an opportunity to say yes or no, and then we respond accordingly to that. Uh, I don't know that in this situation, it needs to be, oh, we can't put it on this year because we got to promote, no, we don't have to promote anything, you either want it, or you don't want it. It's pretty cut and dried to me, if you live in that Wetmore area. I don't think we need to try to convince them to do it, ask them if they want to do it, and if they don't, then that says something to us.
Well, it's a county-wide initiative, everybody would be voting.
No, it would not be a county-wide initiative.
Sure would, because the way he couched it, if, they said, should those that aren't paying it, pay it.
That's not county-wide.
It, yes, it should be, I believe. Think about it for a second. She had a good point, about, she's already paying it taxed, and, and from her point of view, the two districts are paying a tax, would like to see the whole county be covered the same, and so you're, it's a county initiative.
No, I can't vote for somebody else to be taxed.
Right, you're asking the rest of these counties to vote on whether they should pay it, and that's ludicrous. It'd be like, it'd be just the opposite.
That was never the discussion, the discussion was about, it's just saying, to the people in Wetmore, are you willing to, the people who are not paying the three percent, and we can find that out pretty easily, that's who would be the electorate, and you would ask just that, those people, are you willing, hang on a second, are you willing to pay three percent, like the rest of the county is paying, to afford the hospital, West Custer County Hospital District to provide ambulance service to you? And that's a yes or a no? And here's what I will say, I will make a motion, I will move, I hate it when I hear people say, I make a motion, because that's not the proper terminology. I move that we ask our clerk and recorder to give us an idea of what the cost would be for a special election, just for that one ballot issue, and what the additional cost would be if we added to the next regular election.
Yeah, why wouldn't we do it in eighteen months?
Well, when is the next?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Probably, we could wait till then, okay.
We don't need a special election.
Okay, so, I'll retract my motion.
I was going to say, I, I'd support your motion, because I'd like a no, but I also would support putting that on the November twenty twenty ballot.
Well, then I think it'll be nominal.
That's right, yeah, I agree.
I, I have a question, what are, what are you going to do if the citizens of that, that district turn it down?
There you go, great point.
Because you have to know that, what you're going to do as board of county commissioners.
Don't ask a question if you don't have an answer.
That's right.
I agree. Uh, and I don't know, I truly don't. AMR, I know Lisa's talked to them, I've got Ken's number, I'm going to call him and say, not Ken.
Who's Ken?
Lynn, what's his first name?
Scott Lynn.
Scott, thank you. Ken and Lynn, sorry, Scott Lynn, the.
He's a regional operations man.
Yeah, manager for AMR, for this region, to say, would your, basically, nationwide Yeah, manager for AMR for this region to say, would your, basically nationwide company be interested in taking this entire county in your coverage area? That's a possibility. I'm not saying, I agree with it, I'm just saying that would be a possibility, including Contract with Pablo, contract, well, it's all AMR, it doesn't matter.
Their problem.
So, I've already had those conversations with AMR, they're ongoing as we speak, because it's part of my due diligence to make sure EMS is sustainable in this community, so I've had that conversation with, with AMR. I am still waiting for them to get figures back to us. We asked for a couple of different options. What is it, what would it cost for you to come in and run the service? In other words, provide the staff, we already have all the equipment, so provide the staff and the oversight. Second, what does it cost if you come in and buy it? Buy everything? What's that cost? Or, or just management, just leadership?
Right.
Haven't gotten anything back for either one of those.
Okay. You have told us that this is a county commissioner issue. I urge you to work with chairman.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
When these questions go out, even before they go out.
Make sure we help cover the, you know, paying question.
Assuming it ought to be Chairman Flower, that there's a coordination between you and the commissioners through one of us. I mean, this needs to be a dual conversation, not a, I don't want you to come report to us, I wanna be part of that solution.
That's ideal.
If you don't mind me.
No, that's the way it should.
Well, and, and I would ask, and will ask, God, you just shoot us a figure on what it's gonna cost for you to come do this. We'll sell everything, we will liquidate, you come run this, how much is that gonna cost this county?
Have we discussed it with Rye as well? I mean, they're responding to San Isabel.
Right.
Have we discussed?
No, we haven't.
Whether how they can do it?
Certainly would be, would be an option. Yep, we need to look at every option we can come up with, that's for sure.
My comment is, rather than you on your own going directly, and you going on your own directly, we ought to have a coordinated effort. Custer County Emergency Services and the Board of County Commissioners are requesting the following information, and we work together on this solution. It may be viable, it may be not, but we must look at it.
And, it was brought up yesterday. What happens to all the employees that the county currently has.
Amr's gonna need people to do the job.
Right.
See, that's an option, because you can, you can crew, you can be part of the crew on it too.
The truth is, the hardcore truth is, if AMR were to come in here, the first thing they would do is they would not change anything, it was still, say, Custer County EMS, 'cause they did this with MedTrance in La Hanta. They've already done this before in lots of little communities, so they don't come in and try to beat big bad AMR, they try to kinda be on the down low, but provide service. The first bonus is, it's gonna be AMR salary structure, second is, the benefits that AMR provides are way better than I can ever offer. And the chance for advancement, if somebody's interested in advancement, are, are better with AMR, because of the fact that they're this nationwide company, and, and the buying power for them, for their rigs, for their cots, for every single thing, are incredible, and we pay probably four times as much for every single thing we buy as they do. So, and the other folks that I've started to talk to is Kishai with Fire. Does that, does a marriage between Fire and EMS make sense? I don't know.
Done in a lot of areas.
So last night at our board meeting, we, um, developed a, an EMS committee, Jenny Candelaria, Tom Shepherd, who's our new EMS, he's our new board member, and Beth are gonna start to look, 'cause I share all this with them, I'm kinda really, really involved with the marriage to Heart of the Rockies right now, which EMS has nothing to do with. So rather than put this on the back burner, they're gonna start to work together, um, and I haven't given any of them any of this information as far as who they AMR have talked to and all that other stuff, so.
So, the three people on that committee are from the, that side?
Hospital district.
Okay, you haven't included anybody else on that?
No. No, because it was just last night.
Stayed last night, you know?
Right, okay, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Prince that, that we don't need to be in a position of being informed, we need to be in a position of making, jointly making a decision.
Yeah, it has to be collaborative, for sure.
How we go forward, so, yes, sir.
So I would just say this, and I'm, I'm here advocating for my dispatchers, because they're in a trick pack.
Yeah.
Somebody calls from Wetmore and they need 911 service, right now, we page EMS up here, and we give it two times, we're all talking about minutes ticking when somebody needs an ambulance right now. And if they can't come, and we call flight, and they can't fly, we have to go to another option, and it might be an hour before, so we're telling people on the phone, literally, if you can put somebody in a private vehicle and drive to a hospital, and I don't know what that does to us.
It makes us look like a bunch of June boss.
My dispatchers, it's stressing them clear up here.
Well, they gotta have a checklist of what they do.
They do have.
I don't mean that, I meant who that third call is.
Right, they do, but you know, you're talking about somebody screaming on the phone, and you're telling, hey, it might be an hour and a half before we get you in.
They're gonna steal post talks through them, and they're, they're not gonna care about that, yes, sir, and then I'll.
I just have a couple of comments, um, you know, obviously there's a problem, we have to come up with a solution. We need to brainstorm some way to make sure that anybody that's outside of the current coverage area is aware that we have the problem in the first place, so they're not relying on the ambulance, or they know what to do. Secondly, I do know that Florence has addresses of everybody on that end of the county that was in their area of coverage, and every year, I get a donation letter from them in the mail, and I donate to the Florence Fire Department and EMS, because they come into the county, and I know several people that live down there get the same thing, so they're on that same mailing list. I know for me, I'm paying for that service just through voluntary donations, and I think it's just a matter of getting that information to them, are you really aware that right now, you really don't have any coverage? And it's not everybody in District Two, because from San Isabel or 165, clear up into Rosita and, and parts of Lumina, they're in District Two, and they're paying for the ambulance service.
Right, they're in precinct two.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Chan, can I make a suggestion? I think this is a very, very healthy discussion, I think we've had some wonderful suggestions, I think we've had a lot, but I'm concerned that we've been running out of time on our agenda. What I would like to suggest is, can we invite everybody who's interested to come back for a workshop dedicated just for this, um, in the very near future, within maybe a week or so, and so we can devote as many hours as we need to, to discuss this one issue only. I'm a little concerned that.
Yeah, needs to be in another meeting, not in.
It needs to be a workshop, I, I don't wanna put it off, it's immensely important, but I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, we've heard some great ideas, not, in a workshop, but in a workshop we'll be able to flesh them out, come up, and then we could have a strategy plan. We will do one, two, three, four, and one of them, I agree with you, Mike, we need to notify the people who are affected, and, and it could be a letter or whatever, saying that your service right now is in jeopardy. I mean, because the goodness of these people, they're not obligated, they're choosing to take care of you, and you are in jeopardy now because Florence is not covering you anymore. And, so I agree, but that's the kind of thing we could have in a workshop, and come up with a plan, how are we gonna notify them and those kind of things.
Look at the needs for first responders, for tourists that crash and aren't traveling. They go out there and say, sorry, you're outside the district. I've been on those kind of reps.
Right. I just haven't looked it up, when was the district's ending date of service to Wetmore?
Twenty thirty.
Yours, not Florence.
We, I didn't address Wetmore, because that was not our primary, that was never our primary response area. It was the mile marker, twenty.
It's still a secondary, though, right?
Well, what's happened, so, that's what I wanted to say is, the current plan is this, if there's a call in Wetmore, the, the crew that's on call gets toned, if, if, if dispatch can find a second crew for us, so that call crew available, then the primary crew goes to Wetmore. This happened on Sunday, the primary team went to Wetmore, they went to Wetmore, put a patient onto a helicopter, the second crew came in, so they came into the station, they had a call when these guys were out of town, put that one in a, uh, put that one in a helicopter, came back, met the call crew halfway, took the patient to Parkview, I think is where that patient went to. So, that's what we're doing right now, so, an example of what happened Sunday was, 26 miles, 52 miles, we, I, I'm hesitant, I'm very hesitant to leave the district uncovered. I, I, I'm very hesitant to take the primary crew to Wetmore, and then somebody here, something happens and we don't have that crew.
Now, by uncovered, you mean, you don't really mean uncovered, so I think we need to be very specific here, Thomas.
So if, if we have mutual aid agreements with Deer Mountain.
But I'm talking about your second call crew.
Okay, but I don't have a second call crew 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, that is not dispatch's responsibility to try to find a second crew, that's your responsibility. It's their job to tone out.
Well, it's our, it's, dispatch currently is doing that.
Is doing what? Toning out for second call.
Calling a second crew, toning a second crew, which takes valuable time away from a critical incident in progress. And, and we're talking about everything else that's going on in dispatch. If it's a major crash, that phone's blown up, dispatch has to take the time to tone EMS initially.
Okay.
And then try to find a second crew to cover up here, I mean.
Okay, and wouldn't dispatch trying to find, I struggle with that, a second crew, you tone out for a second crew, right?
They tone, they're not calling on the phone.
Right, they tone, I don't, I didn't mean this, I mean, tone out, and whose responsibility is it for that second crew to be available? It's not dispatcher's responsibility.
No, it's only our responsibility to tone it, but they don't go out.
That's what I was getting at, that's your responsibility to have a second crew available, right? In, in a perfect world.
Absolutely.
Okay, it may or may not happen, but it's not dispatch's job to find a crew. That's all I'm saying.
You're, you're absolutely right.
It's their responsibility to tone out for a second call.
And that's what we've asked, that's what, at this point, we've.
And so when you say, I, I hesitate to leave the county uncovered by sending a first call crew down.
So I'm sorry, so that, that didn't come out right, so if, if Beth and I are on, on staff, right, this is our shift to work.
Yeah.
We get a call in Wetmore, we, we are readying ourselves to go to Wetmore, okay? Dispatch tones out a second crew, because often we have people that live locally, that, because they're firefighters as well, so they carry radios, so they don't necessarily sign up for, sign up for second call.
Right.
Because if they wanna run into Pablo or whatever, they can, but if they're on call, they can't go. So, lots of times people will say, yep, I'll get it, I'll come in. So they tone out for a, a, the second, which is the, which could be considered a call crew. Once we know they're available, we go.
Okay.
We go to Wetmore. This is what happened Sunday, we go to Wetmore.
Understood.
We take care of the patient. In the meantime, I don't know if they were in Wetmore, on their way to Wetmore, tones drop for a call in Rosita.
Got it.
So the crew that came in, went to Rosita, got that patient, the crew in Wetmore, put the patient on the helicopter, they talked to each other, they came back, took the Rosita patient, turned around, so they had a headoff that way. So when I say uncovered, then it's that second crew, if that second crew isn't available, the option is, is Deer Mountain, 'cause we have an MOU with them, who are generally 35 minutes-ish, or longer, response time.
Right.
And they don't always have a crew available either, 'cause they're also volunteering.
How many calls a month, average, out of Wetmore?
Oh, a month, I don't, I don't even know.
Five.
Maybe, I don't even know.
On the average, for the last year, they've averaged five calls a month.
A month, okay, maybe.
I'm just gonna throw this out, we don't have to dissect it and dice it up. I don't know that it would be criminal for you to send a crew to Wetmore on an emergency and then deal with a second crew. That's just me.
So.
Find, put your second crew on, in service after that first crew left, on the average, five times a month.
What if I don't have a second crew available?
You should have if you're running a hospital or ambulance district, yes, sir. I, we'll come back, I'm not shutting you off, but he's been waiting patient, go ahead.
I think as many of us travel that road and through that area, the county commissioners need to make a temporary stand, right here at, at this meeting, stating that this ambulance will cover that until you get something figured out. They, you can't have a hole, it could happen to any one of us.
Oh, yeah, it, it did happen to that young gal that the three of us ended up on.
So I, I'm just want you to take care of a loophole here, so when they leave here, they know they're gonna cover it.
Gotcha.
And it'll help the chairman.
Okay, now, in all fairness, I threw a dagger at you.
No, that's okay, there's other people waiting, and I know Jen's been waiting, right?
You get an opportunity to deflect that, I'll get to you, but I said, you should have a second call. As a taxpayer, I believe that, Lisa, I really do. If you don't have a second call crew, then I go, I'm a taxpayer, why in the hell can't we find, why can't we put a second crew on call?
You tell me, sir, and where do I get these people to put them on call? Where do I get them from? Where do I, where do I get the employees?
Right.
Who wanna work for the wage that we can pay them?
Right.
And work, um, as many hours a week as they want to? If, I, that's, to me, that's the answer. We have more local folks now than we ever have, not ever, but at least in the last five years, I think, local folks. We only have two people who live out of town.
So in a perfect world, we're talking about a driver, ALS, and basic.
No, a perfect world, I'm not talking about a driver, I'm talking about an ALS provider and a BLS provider.
Okay.
So either a paramedic, an intermediate, and a basic, no.
So two people?
Two people, that's it.
So we don't have four people in this county?
That, that, a standard crew is two, ALS and BLS.
That's where I was getting at, standard.
So ideally, if you're in a really big metropolitan area, you're gonna run with two P's, so you're gonna have two paramedics.
So ALS, BL.
Right now, AMR and Pablo's down 11 medics, 11 paramedic openings they have. It's a nationwide problem with not having enough people to work. So, i- it's not just a here issue, it's an everywhere issue. So I would love, I mean, we had an EMT basic class here in the, in, in the fall and the winter, so that we could create and grow within, and that's how we got, what, five of our current employees? Because we knew we needed to do something locally and keep people local.
How many ALS people do we have?
Right now, I have one.
How often?
He works, tell me, how many hours a week?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours a week, one.
So, fair to say two shifts a week? Is a shift 12 hours or not?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, 'cause I'm telling you, I'm getting darts thrown at me that we do not have ALS, and I keep saying we do.
We do.
But I wanna make, I'm sure I understand exactly what we have.
Yeah, he lives out of the county, he's a full-time firefighter, paramedic, and fountain.
So he comes in here for one 24-hour stint, or two different 12s?
One day a week, he drives up and does 24-hour shifts.
For, for advanced life support right now, that is correct.
And so two people is a standard crew on an ambulance?
Correct. Preferably, the best patient care, the best patient care would be two paramedics, because they have the, the greatest scope of practice. Next is gonna be paramedic and an intermediate, which is also considered an ALS provider, or a paramedic intermediate, or a basic. A driver can only drive, drive the ambulance and do CPR, and be a, I'm gonna use the term gopher, and I need to use that word, but they can go get things, that's all they can do.
Okay.
There, there's no hands-on patient care if you're a driver.
But a standard crew today does not include a driver and BLS, ALS, that's not.
No, a standard crew is two.
Thank you, go ahead, sir.
Okay, we're working this, and none of us are the experts, we need to get everybody in the same room and come up with a solution. I like John's suggestion, is, right now, you're gonna respond to a call, some Fremont or down that way, if you can, I mean, that's a given.
Absolutely.
You are doing that.
Yes.
And we know you're hampered, and we know that you, you've got backup supposedly supposed to have a second. Bob, whatever it is, you're going to do your best. Meantime, it's important for us to get the right people, and you suggested a workshop. Well, I think that, if we talk that through a little bit, you need to have the fire guys in there, you need to have you guys and the EMS, well, whoever. And what I would suggest is that we leave this meeting with the action that has you, sort of, because of the spearhead here, to get the right people together to set up that workshop with the right people, so that we can have a discussion. Tom's not an expert, I'm not an expert, and Jay's not, but we are responsible to make things happen. And if it means paying some extra money somehow, that's above whatever middle levies we come up with and the ideas to put on balance, to train somebody to man an ambulance, or whatever, as an interim, we can discuss that in the workshop. We need that. We can't work it here, you know, off the cuff. So we really need to get the right, and I mentioned three, you've got the forest, or the fire department, these guys, who else? It ought to be, get together a little meeting, come and...
That's your pitch.
That's right.
Mine may not line up with it.
Well, but mine neither, Tom, it's not you or me, it's a board of commissioners here, and we got to get the right people in front of the board, so that we can do that. And now, if you've got a better suggestion to get them together, to get together to say, "What's the context of that workshop? Who, what kind of information do we want to propose?" And come into the group to have this discussion, so that we can get the workshop to be fruitful, rather than just a bunch, you know, we want it to be the best we can as soon as we can. So tell me who else it ought to be? If they're, to get that core together, not to do the workshop necessarily, but get the core together to come to us with when that would be, and propose a time and date, let's do it.
And I don't mean to be a butthole, but this isn't off the cuff, man.
I didn't say that.
You did say that, Bill, you said, "We shouldn't be doing this off the cuff." I've spent 30 days researching this.
You did, he didn't, I didn't, and some of these guys are giving us some ideas, and we're working it real time right now, Tom, and I don't think it's fair to the, to the other experts that are out there, to help your expertise working and researching be valuable in that workshop. That's my point. And right now, we're doing it with, with guys that came in here to talk about water things, land use, you know, new OEM, whatever. We've got to do the right thing, and I, we're not going to get an answer by just, and I don't mean disrespect about off the cuff, because if you did research, let's get that team together as soon as we can. I like Mark's point back there, Mike, the, Mike, I got to mark it. We got to get coverage, and it is important. And so, let's move on. Let's get, what's the action? Lisa?
So I think the action, because I can be saying that it's your responsibility as a board of county commissioners, you decide who needs to be at the table, and again, invite us, that's why we're here. We want to help solve the problem. We know it's a problem. So, again, I would think, I would absolutely think Kid Shy needs to be involved, maybe the entire fire board, I don't know, that might be too many. Beth, myself, I think maybe somebody from law enforcement as well.
Yeah, I was going to say that, too.
I definitely think so.
Get the leadership together and propose that, and come back to us with the...
And then I also think this new kind of committee that the hospital district just formed should be there as well. Again, there's lots of, there's lots of, I think there's options here, but I think it does take, and that's kind of what we've been asking for, for the last month, is, let's get together and talk about it. That's what we think.
I think we're all in agreement, the workshop would be the appropriate...
Let's do it in Wetmore.
Well...
I'd like to do it in Wetmore, because those are the people affected. Some of those folks have a hard time coming up here. I would like to go down to them and let them come and sit and listen and participate if they choose to, just like anybody here. And I recognize for the people here that would like to go, that's an inconvenience, to go to Wetmore. But that's who's affected, that's where this needs to be.
That's why I've got my calendar open in 17.
Perfect. Let's both do it.
Mr. Mike, I've got a question for you. I'm frustrated. I don't know how to inform the citizens in the Wetmore area. I've tried. Now, maybe going back to Florence's address list would be a place to start. Ask them if they would send a notification to Wetmore and say, "You guys need to understand, we're no longer covering your area, but they are having a meeting in Wetmore on the 17th of July, you should probably attend." I don't know. But how in the world do we tell people in Wetmore? Go ahead.
It sounds like Bill Ritter, who's the chief for Florence EMS, has that list, because if they're sending letters out to Wetmore, asking for donations to their annual Fireman's Ball, or whatever they have, he already has that list.
He's got a list of some...
So I would call Bill Ritter, who's, he's the guy who sent the letter saying, "Please cease and desist."
Yeah.
So I'd call Bill and say, "Hey, Bill, would you share that list with us? Because we want to let the county residents know."
And that's what I was asking.
Just nice lady, but waiting on us.
Yes, she has. Go ahead, Mr. Jennifer, sorry.
A lot of it has been addressed, this conversation has gone back and forth, so most of the things...
Yeah, that's what everybody else does, so don't be bashful.
I just, the staffing issue here, you know, as community members, a concern, adhering there. I'm, to give, I've been a first responder, firefighter, paramedic for 17 years. I understand the difficult parts of a rural community. I do understand. As a community member coming from that aspect, the staffing is a concern. I think this is a great opportunity for the county commissioners to look at other options, as she's already started doing, because it may need to go in a different direction.
Good thing. We don't know, but it has to be on the table.
And this issue right now is absolutely, you know, first priority. It's critical, is what I'm glad that there's this discussion.
It is critical, and unfortunately, that raises my blood pressure up a little, and I start saying and acting probably professionally.
So when you, you said the 17th?
I do want to say too, yes, that people have asked me, "Hey, getting ready to get in bed with Heart of the Rockies Regional Medical," I said, "That's, they're not a player." I believe that, if you...
As far as EMS goes?
Yeah.
That is correct, they are...
And that's what I've been saying, that that is not an option for us to go to...
They know nothing about EMS, and they know that, and they're like, "We are not going to get into business, so we don't know anything about."
So by consent, gentlemen, can we agree to schedule a workshop in Wetmore after our meeting, probably starting, let's say, at 1:30 gives a chance to run and get a bite to eat?
Makes sense.
Or, I hate to wait till 2:00, because that gets a little late.
Yes, don't wait till 2:00.
Well, just don't go away from your meeting then.
Yeah, I have no idea what that agenda is going to look like, but 1:30 would be reasonable?
Yeah.
Commissioner Prince?
Absolutely.
And you're okay, sir?
Yeah.
So we'll do an emergency medical service workshop in Wetmore, starting at 1:30. And June 17th, that's a Wednesday, or July, sorry. Who asked that question? Sorry. Oh, okay. July 17th. I, if it's all right with you gentlemen, we'll at least make an attempt to try to figure out how to inform all the people in Wetmore. However that looks.
And let's also get with Mr. Drew on suggestions on who's going to be there. Your suggestions are excellent.
I have just three, really quick. Could you use reverse 911 to get rid of, to get word out to them, if they have?
Some of them don't have.
You know, for years and years and years, we responded to almost all traffic accidents all the way down. Not medical, but all traffic accidents. The reality is that if you right now said you will still cover them, that's not going to make a whole lot of difference. Second crew, you know, if this guy crosses a tree and has a heart attack, they take him down, we're still not covered. You know, unless there's a second crew.
If the first crew is down there.
Yeah, if there's, I mean, it doesn't make any difference where the first crew is. If there's no second crew, there's no second crew.
Then you truly aren't. Yeah.
That's it.
All right. Quickly, if somebody else has something pertinent to this, let's have that discussion. Appreciate your input this morning. I know Commissioner Candy came in this morning and said, "It should be a fairly quick meeting," and I looked at her, and I don't think so.
Ain't going to happen.
If, we'll move forward, we'll try to bring the appropriate players to the table. I'm going to guess, probably, we run that by the commissioners for consent. I'm not going to go invite somebody to the table without you also agreeing by consent that they should be there.
Now, we need the right guys, need that.
I have just a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the 17th, you're going to invite the community of Wetmore?
Yes.
And the same day, we expect that to be a work group?
Yeah, that's a great point. That's a great point.
So to me, gentlemen, that is not going to work, because...
I would guess we'll probably have five or six people from Wetmore.
There won't be many.
That could be off-lap after it too, because they probably won't be there, but...
It's not going to be a full...
Let's do this. Let's, let's schedule it as a workshop. We will inform them that we're having a workshop, they can come and sit in the audience.
So is that going to include AMR and RY possibly, if that's an option on the table?
Well, that's what you guys need to get with the three leads there, and make a decision who you want to invite.
I unfortunately won't be able to attend that day, I'll be at school.
Get the right people, so we can ask questions and get them answered, because Tom had some good points.
Monday's and Friday's, eight to five.
I was giving you, I was giving you another look as a joke.
Good point, Kristen, and I think probably we need to give that some thought.
I mean, if you're going to have options, you should have all the options.
Right, because we know, we'll have a repeat of this again.
That's right, we're just going to ask questions nobody has the right answer to.
So I can tell you that whoever's at the table for AMR is not going to give you an answer on the 17th.
Right.
They're not going to have that, because I've been asking for that information already since December, and haven't seen it in paper yet, but...
Put the word out, we're going to be asking questions, and we need some example answers, like, "What's it going to cost by the hour, blah, blah, blah?" They know those costs.
Well...
They probably won't divulge them at that meeting.
Maybe not, but they can divulge all the cost range.
We can still invite them and get names to faces, and so they know us, and on and on.
And I think, I think it's behooves them to know what our issue is, and how they could be part of the solution.
So, good point.
Give them a heads up, don't just invite them.
Sure.
By consent, gentlemen, I'd like to take about a five-minute recess.
Of course.
All right? Good?
Yeah.
All right, we stand in recess.
Ron, do you want to get up and stretch your old man legs?
Come on, Johnny.
Nobody heard the word "job" of the week.
Come on, John.
All the things right now.
Clint, where's your tie?
Chairman called a meeting back order. Our records show 11:07, June 28. Next item of business, consideration of planning commission's recommendations for land use. Lady and gentleman, would you like to come forward? Or you want to deal from right there, or what's your...
Let's just do it from right here, since there's a number of us.
All right, good. Did you find that?
I found, I didn't find the one that he identically sent you. We discussed it in a board meeting, but the proposal, do you want me to do it, or do you want to do it?
No, you go.
The, wow, let me tie. The BOCC would, this is our recommendations after having a meeting and a workshop with the planning commission.
Oh, no, it's like, two meetings.
Yes. So the planning commission would like to recommend that the BOCC would impose a five-year moratorium on subdivisions.
Countywide?
Please.
Okay.
The PC would amend the zoning resolution to eliminate PUDs, which is Planned Unit Developments, from Zones 1 and 2, but keep PUDs in Zones 3 and 4.
Last question, please. I've looked this up, and I'm still a little confused. What is the difference between a subdivision and a PUD? A planned unit development and a subdivision?
I always think planned unit developments are more like a cluster where you can have the golf courses, the PUDs.
Multi-use, multi-use housing, commercial.
A subdivision is not. It's only residential.
Entire housing too, as opposed to subdivision.
So PUD may include some commercial activity in the development. I've been clouding on it.
Great question and good clarification.
More intense water use in one area.
Right. Yeah.
Oh, and then number three, the PC would impose a five-year moratorium on PUDs in Zone 3. Huh, he did that twice. All right, nope, I didn't do that. 1 and 2, 3 and 4.
Where's, where are they?
So what we're asking for is a five-year moratorium on subdivisions, and to eliminate the PUDs in all our zones.
No, you didn't say that. Eliminating 1 and 2 and a moratorium in 3 and 4.
Which we also, we had this discussion, and I thought we had changed it, that the elimination of PUDs in 1 and 2, change that to west of Highway 69.
That was the last thing I had.
See, and this is the only, no, I have.
Okay, 1, and when you said 1 and 2, I was thinking west of 69.
But you go further south on 69, and that's not the case. That's worth it for someone in that lower county.
So the wording should be west of 69. That's what you guys... And then the last one was a moratorium on PUDs in?
3 and 4.
3 and 4.
3 and 4, is that right?
Yes.
So read it all again.
Okay. Impose a five-year moratorium on subdivisions. The PC would amend the zoning resolution to eliminate PUDs from Zones 1 and 2, but keep PUDs in 3 and 4. The PC would impose a five-year moratorium on PUDs in Zones 3 and 4.
So you want five years?
Where's that, west of 69?
I was going to say, is west of 69, or specifically 3 and 4?
Well, it's west of 69 is what we, we had talked about changing it to, because 1 and 2 doesn't take care of...
Then 3 as well.
Okay, so instead of, so when it, just west of 69, period, is that what it is, Tom?
Can I make a suggestion? I don't have no problems with...
Any.
I like my word "no," and you always say that to me. Any problems with eliminating PUDs, and, but my suggestion is, let's just eliminate them. This is the desert out here.
Then you need to go back to the planning commission, if that's what you want to do.
Right, and just because it's desert doesn't mean there might not be a use that, you know, some place is, not like it's going to be an oasis building some house, it could be some other thing that some harebrings.
Solar farm.
You got to leave the options.
Is it an oasis?
I know. That's why.
So if you're recommending to change it, then you got to go back, if you want to consider this.
Let's pretend I didn't say that.
I've already eliminated...
So east of 69, I almost said I-25. East of 69 and west of 69, and forget the numerical values of those?
Yeah, it's west of 69.
Okay.
Does that cover the county to county?
That's the PUD.
North and south.
Obviously, where the towns are...
Excluding that, we're talking about county.
Okay, just want to make sure. Impose five-year moratorium on S U B C.
Uh, no.
Subdivision.
Subdivision.
Thank you. Countywide?
Countywide. Eliminate PUDs from 1 and 2?
Nope. Anywhere west of 69. The numbers go away.
Okay, eliminate PUDs anywhere west of 69. And then impose five-year moratorium on PUDs in 3 and...
Nowhere.
No, east.
East.
Okay. Okay, east. I think I got it.
Excluding the municipality.
Right. I mean, the subdivision ban basically only affects 3 and 4, anyway.
Just shake your head, yes, don't look down.
So you're telling me if I had the money and the wherewithal, I could not put in a subdivision, not counting this moratorium? I could not go out here east and put a subdivision in?
He said west.
You said west?
No, I said...
1 and 2.
1 and 2. See, in One and Two, that's not even gonna affect it because we don't have any jurisdiction in One and Two for subdivisions. Because you can't divide less than 35 acres.
That's right.
In those zones anyway. So it's not a subdivision.
I understand completely. No, no, that's...
Well, I have a question.
I was thinking east when you said One and Two, sorry.
I have a question on that. If you're subdividing, I'm sorry, if you are creating lot lines based on 35 acres, not based on quarter quarters, is that a subdivision?
No, according to state, I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over anything.
Thirty-five or greater.
Thirty-five or greater. So it's basically not a subdivision in our terminology.
So you can cut your 600 acres into 35s and not be a subdivision?
Which they've done a lot.
But I maintain you would legally be subdividing your property.
Sure.
And so therefore, one would think that is a subdivision.
Under our regulations, it's not. You're not within our subdivision regs. The only thing we can do, as we've had this come up before, is we can, as a county, have a say with access in a 35-acre development. And also, we had, what was it, one amendment, it was a Wildlife Review. That's, wait, that, that got us into looking at the development.
But only from those viewpoints?
The use of it.
But we got the E O W and everybody involved in that, so that created a little asshole form, too, because we wanted to find out what they were doing and how they were gonna do it.
But if they answered those questions from those viewscapes, then you had nothing to say about it.
We got nothing to say about it.
Nothing.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Branson. Can you ask what's precipitating this? Is the, is the purpose to conserve water or is it to conserve density population? What, why is this recommendation coming forward?
Okay, basically, and as part of our discussion, a lot of it was so that in the meantime, maybe we could determine what the water supply was, and maybe we need to tighten up our subdivision regs on improving the water supply for that subdivision. If they're gonna drill a well for each house, is there gonna be water in those wells?
Did your discussion include growth? Either stemming, preventing, promoting growth? Was that part of the discussion as to why we're looking at this?
I mean, basically, it was because we don't know the availability of the water.
Agreed.
We have, there's so many vacant lots flat out there already in these hills and throughout there, you're gonna have the growth anyway. I mean, if they all build a house on those and drill a well, because that's pre-centerville 35, they can do that. But this makes us as a county look at what we have, what our water supply is, what upper art is going to do, what we're gonna do in response to that, and gives us time to do it without somebody trying to come in here and do something that might injure us.
Right.
Or someone, or have upper art do something we don't want them to do with our...
Go ahead, sir.
I just wanna say, I commend you for having the foresight to think of this and to be proactive instead of reactive once we find our water supply falling below acceptable levels. I just want to tell you, I don't want you to be kissy-happy, but I appreciate you doing this.
I think I read a stat that there's over...
You're talking to Jackie.
Five thousand. Five thousand undeveloped parcels.
I think there's 67.
It would be interesting to know of those which are 35 and greater.
It's on your little sheet.
Little sheet mean that big map?
No, I gave you a sheet every morning, you had a sheet of all the subdivisions.
Oh, yeah.
And it was X, two was under 35, but it was over 35.
I mean, there's subdivisions out there that have one-acre lots.
Right. Which was where I was headed, that we can't just sit back and assume that those are all 35-acre lots, because we know they're not. I mean, they could be down to one acre, and because they're in a subdivision, if they can find the water...
It's their risk.
Then they could have a well on one acre.
Right, because they're, they're pre-centerville 35 lots alone.
Right.
Well, that's why the Silverclough Heights, all the Conovermies, all these other guys jumped on the subdivision to beat that Senate bill so they could all be five-acre zones.
There were other things you guys had talked about as a planning commission besides these, but this is what you settled out that you thought was reasonable and prudent.
For this round.
For this round. I mean, just to give you a little heads up, and we don't have to discuss this, but water being the big issue, do we require everybody to have a well if they put up a dwelling? Do we do things on tiny houses, trade that other counties are doing because it's getting to the point where you go up to some of these counties and that's all you see out there, and they're trying to stop that? I mean, the subdivisions here, you either have to have a, some of them are 800 square feet to 1200 square feet. That's the smallest. And they have restrictions on, well, not all the old subdivisions do. So there's a lot of things coming up that we wanna get into, and so this can become...
Representative John, do you have a...
Yeah. I don't want you to lose sight on all of the water that has been filed on, non-irrigation water. I, I mean, like surface rights, like the springs that were all filed on, the injury for them, been filed on long ago, the non-exempt wells that have to, some of them can be irrigation wells and all of those, and every additional well that's drilled is gonna injure them. And I'm saying it's gonna injure them because they have to prove that their well won't injure them. And there's a good list, a substantial list of both of those items. And I think with the more holes being poked in the ground, it comes back to the county commissioners and planning commissioning and zoning to protect those because a good many of those were done in 72 and before.
You can just glance at it so you get the idea of the magnitude, I think, that John was referring to. These two documents, one of them are adjudicated springs, the other of them are adjudicated wells, those happen to be wells, that happens to be the springs. Not many people realize how many springs in this county have been filed on and are adjudicated water rights.
Yes.
So everybody thinks, well, it's gonna injure the residents. Just on the surface, that's a small part of it when you start looking at it. The amount of domestic wells and springs that it could also impact, that's my point.
The other thing I might add, over on my side, like we did some stuff to take, eliminate some problems in some fields, this, I went six foot through dry peat moss, and I hit a clay layer and it was bone dry. Now, we had a big, big runoff of water here. But now we're shutting ditches off because there isn't enough water flowing to service them. So our nice spring runoff was very temporary, so our water supply going back into the ground, we're gonna get some of it in the underground, but it wasn't a, a big fix-all miracle, it's gonna take years.
Not enough to recharge.
To recharge, yes, that's what I'm saying. And so this is, the water deal is the huge, huge thing for all of us.
I've got a question for you, Mr. John. So you decide you wanna give your daughters a piece of ground for Christmas. Is this moratorium gonna prevent you from doing that? From dividing, let's say, the 640 into 320s?
No, not the way I listen to it here.
We got subdivision 80s. You can't cut it smaller than that, what he can do.
I can't, where I'm at, I can't go smaller than 80s.
Right. But you could still do it. This moratorium would not infringe upon your right to do that.
No.
But here, here's the other thing that I wanna caution you about in, in this valley floor even. You know, it can be chopped up in 80s.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then you have the possibility of having somebody put in a facility like Donna Hood or whatever and pull more water out. Though, in the valley floor, duh, it's the only place that you're really gonna hit water. I mean, you can miss it out there. But this thing can snowball on you, and, and the county will end up with tax dwellings with no water. You think people are gonna stay here with no water?
We just, we just eliminated P U Ds in Zone Three.
Yeah, I understand that, but 35s can be the same way.
But we don't have no choice.
I understand that. I completely agree.
And really, actually, the water thought that that would be helpful, less draws. That's why they said 35.
I understand all of that.
And if it's gonna be commercial, it'll end up here eventually anyway, right? For an S U P, so.
But looking forward is what I'm saying. Looking forward, look at your possibilities of where they're at for water dependency. I'm not, I'm going past the current discussion. I think it's great.
I learned something the other day at a meeting. I asked a question, how long? A company was contracted to buy electricity from a tri-state generation, and the contract was from 2007 to 2050. And their mentality, I'll circa, I'll get around to it. Their mentality was, well, the 2050 is never gonna come into play because in about 2025, we'll re-up for an additional 20 or 30 years on that, so that they have that in the bank to leverage against for electrical needs. Same thing should apply here. With this five-year moratorium, I'd like to explore this again in about three years. Instead of waiting until the day it expires at the end of the fifth year and go, now what are we gonna do? We gotta keep looking down the road. That's what made me think about this, is that we gotta keep looking down the road. We can't get to the end of the five-year road and go, oh my God, now what? Now, maybe we don't do it, but I think we ought to at least consider it and say, was it effective? Did we make any ground on gaining our knowledge and our science? And if we haven't, maybe we better look at adding another X number of years on the end of it. I don't know, I just, I don't wanna wait till the end and go, oh gosh, now what? Start breaking up the hands.
See, a lot of it's gonna depend on what we can find out about what water supply actually is. If we find out it's not there, it may be a permanent.
Right. Further discussion, gentlemen? Further public comment? Yes?
I will say, on those papers of those springs and whatnot, they're all over. They're in East Hill.
Right, now, not just everybody. Countywide.
That's all.
Yep, thank you, I didn't mention that. If not, then I believe we'll proceed to vote on...
There's no motion on the floor.
No.
I move we accept the recommendation by the planning.
Thank you. I'll second it. Been moved and seconded to approve the recommendations of the planning commission that include placing a five-year moratorium countywide on subdivisions and eliminate P U Ds west of Highway 69, and place a five-year moratorium on P U Ds east of 69. Wasn't in the motion, I'm assuming, to start July 1?
Effective July 1.
Any further discussion? Proceed to vote. On the papers, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Yes, sir.
This didn't pertain to the motion, that's why I'm bringing it up after this discussion. When I go through that list you gave us, Jackie, of the subdivisions that have already been approved, and it looks like there's jillions of them, is it, is it even possible to retract a subdivision if, if like it hasn't been acted on in X amount of years and it's been abandoned and...
But that's the problem because all those subdivisions have built out on them, not full-built out, but they do have built out, so no.
It's not like abandoning a water right.
No, and then also, will Clint be writing a moratorium for both of these things?
I would guess that would be the direction we'd need to go.
Because like your marijuana...
And then it will end up in your regs, I'm assuming.
Correct, it'll be on the front page.
Well, do you wanna put it in the zoning resolution? It's one as a resolution of the board.
Resolution of the board, and then...
I would like to take the moratorium for the subdivision and make a copy of it and put it in the front of the subdivision books, what I have left, and I've got pretty more. But then I'd also like to have the moratorium for my file, and I'm just gonna take out the whole P U D section of the zoning.
You're gonna amend your zoning regs by eliminating the P U D?
Correct.
That wasn't part of the motion, was it?
It'll be a result of this motion. It's just housekeeping, really, how you're gonna go about that.
Uh, but so I would need two documents from Mr., three.
Third being?
East of 69, west of 69, I guess you don't have to separate them. Well, yeah, one's a moratorium and one's, I'll need three more.
Right, so it would be three.
No.
Two more.
Two moratoriums, that sounds like mortician.
Yeah, and then elimination.
Uh-huh, just so that they can't say, well, Jackie, you took P U Ds out and didn't have...
Right.
That needs to be recorded.
Okay, very good. Sir, you all right with that, counsel? No more morticians.
May I respond to Jay?
Yes.
Your question regarding subdivisions, I've been digging into our zoning regulations, amended the state statute that is quoted in the regulation, and I believe there's room for a little clarification. Our 10.8 refers to land use and acreage together. But when you review the state statute quoted in 10.8, state statute separates land use and acreage. I know that all of a sudden, it's kinda like opening Pandora's box. But if you go to the big cities, they deal with land use and not so much acreage. So I'm questioning if the statute quoted is being correctly applied, and if it's not, we might be in a situation where if acreage and land use are actually separated, then the subdivision may be 51-acre lots, but our zoning regulations could then say you need 10 acres for a building envelope, so you would have to put together somehow 10 of those lots. 1-acre lots. I, I'm just, that, that's just, I've been digging, trying to, trying to understand how the county is going to deal with this long-term. That's all, I'm not advocating anything.
I get it. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, we will move on, consideration of the O E M.
That's non-conforming lots, right?
As I was saying, we will move on to the O E M hiring process. Giving you a hard time, Keith.
You know what, Donna?
Um, I think we're okay. If we need, we, maybe we can give her a call. I don't care really one way or the other, certainly she could. So, let's set this aside.
Here, I'll put these back in here. Or is that just one of mine?
My manager's notebook, yeah.
What's the name of the...
Ominous. So I, I think discussion here obviously is merited and healthy and necessary. To push you a quick background for people that are in the room, we had seven applications for our Office of Emergency Management manager position. We have reviewed those, and so I thought we ought to have a discussion about what we wanna do next and when. Obviously, names are of no relevance at this point, it's strictly about the process. So, what do you guys think?
Thanks. Okay. My suggestion is let's narrow it down to those that we feel would be actual viable candidates. Let's pick a date, an next week or two, let's get them in here, and let's have an interview of just the ones that we've, I don't wanna waste their time or our time if they don't have a qualification, since we've had that opportunity to review them, and then we're gonna go into executive session in a little while, and we could talk about the individual names and people. But for process, I would say let's narrow it down to whatever.
Those that are actually qualified.
Those that are qualified, and that we feel, based on what we've read, would fit the bill, and then let's set a time and invite them in for an interview. My suggestion would be that the three of us in the interview committee, Ms. Hobby, of course, and the suggestion was made for, oh, her name just slipped my mind. Kristi Coleman, thank you. Kristi Coleman, I think, to me, that would be an excellent committee for interviewing, and I think we could invite, Sheriff, thank you so much, guys, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Keith.
And we could invite the hospital district and the police and anybody else who would like to submit questions for us to determine, pardon me, if we'd like to use them. So that would be the, the procedure I would throw out on the table.
Okay. I come at it from a little different direction. I was gonna suggest that the three of us, Ms. Hobby, Kristi Coleman, Shannon Byerly be involved.
Say again, Shannon Byerly, Kristi Coleman, Donna.
Then the three of us.
Why wouldn't we, then, why wouldn't we have the kid shot?
You don't think it's applicable?
Why not? We get in the center where you're having forest fires, you say, on an activity or whatever.
I think your points are well taken. Either we have both of whom, we have, no, either of them, and ask them to submit questions, but I don't know, I think that's reasonable. I hate to get, but I didn't wanna get it out of hand. This is our position, and having advisors to help us make the best decision certainly is warranted and appropriate, but we could have everybody who's affected by the emergency management.
That's the leadership of the departments that are most affected by the execution, to me, that would be the forest, the fire chief, the sheriff, always, and us, and Donna.
Then you get in search of rescue.
Right. Kristi Coleman oversees all that, she's so intimate. Kristi Coleman oversees all that, she's so intimately involved in it, in every aspect of it, she could represent, police, fire, search and rescue. So that's why I, the suggestion when she was brought in, I wrote back and said, "I think that's a great idea."
And I certainly would support limiting it to us three, Donna and Kristi, being done with it, because then we just start down that road of how...
That's where I get run into problems.
No, I agree, but I still think the fire chief is keen to me, one of the same as the sheriff, to me.
So you think too?
Because I've seen him, that's how I see him in action, I see them as the lead, the command center chief leading me to fire chief or the city mayor. They have had the most visibility of people in their interactions with other counties, and us, the people involved, to me. I don't want to get, one thing we got to do is make sure that it's clean, because I don't want to have the wrong people.
To be 100% honest with you, I was a little miffed, not with you guys, but with one or two audience members, when we were discussing some personnel issue, and they were telling us how we need to do it.
I agree.
And I don't want to advocate our responsibility to others, it's our job, I want their input, it's important to have their input, that's why I'm saying suggest the question, but I don't have a problem if they're here. I'm just concerned about that, this is not a decision by committee, it's a decision by committee.
And that's my point, the lead, the selection committee is the three of us, accurately, Donna's an advisor, really.
Only advisors.
And I would look at that as the same with the other two guys.
I'm ambivalent either way, I was just thinking, I hate to get too...
You know, somebody asked me, "Sure, you're going to include City Howard in this process?"
No.
Haven't had that discussion, so where do you draw the line? I'll go out on a limb, I move that we form a committee consisting of us, human resource director, and Kristi Coleman, I don't know her total title, regional emergency manager...
Regional field manager.
Regional field manager for OEM.
I'll second you.
We're moving to second, to put this committee together of now would be five people, commissioners, Kristi Coleman, Donna Hobby, discussion?
I still would like to see Kit become the person to fire chief.
If we did fire chief, then we have to do sheriff.
If we do sheriff, then we have to do sheriff.
As an input, that would be my only suggestion.
And the only reason I struggle with that is because then who else?
You don't, it's easy, because the who else is not a lead command post chief, no.
Here they are.
No, they're there.
Search and rescue is just as important as fire. And I want you over here, I'm just firing on my phone.
Further discussion? Public comment? You're the only public left? Well, is he public?
No. He's getting a paycheck, I'm not.
No?
I just wondered, do you want to narrow it down at all to a number?
We're going to go there.
Yeah, we're going to.
But we'll deal with this.
Give me one second, let me think this through just a little bit more. I put a tremendous amount of thought into this, but I think Bill's comment is certainly relevant.
Well, I do too, to the extent if we're going to do that, then I think we've got to go the whole route. I would not support exclusively just the fire chief, I think if we go that route for that input, then we need to go other routes as well.
And this is just for picking the people you're going to interview, this is not about the interview process?
No, no, this is selecting, it's part of the recommend, it's people's input for our consideration, potentially, people that actually work job. And right now, you're saying Kristi's fine if we ask her?
No, clearly, in my opinion.
I think she has.
No, I was in terms of suggestion, I had no issue there.
I can tell you, she did tell me that regardless of what you decide, you need to understand that she was going to be on the job the week of July 8th. So she said I would not be able, she's going to be in Craig, I believe she said, on July 8th, that would...
It should be harder to hear it, anybody else.
Yeah, that's what, I didn't think it'd be a big deal, but I was thinking...
July 5th would be my day.
I was saying we probably would convene sometime, I wouldn't think in the workshop, but 17th or 18th, so...
One of us is maybe a vacation now.
The week of the 8th?
No, 18th, I think, I may be gone, it's not affirmed, but...
Well, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Further discussion?
I'm good with it either way, I can get comfortable, but it's, I would like to hear.
Your point's really well taken, but I'm afraid we won't, so I'll call the question.
We'd go from 6 to 10, just like that.
In a second.
So, because I would, sorry. Previous question's been called, all in favor of ending debate and moving to an immediate vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Previous question passes, all in favor of adding Donna Hobby and Kristi Coleman to our interview process with the commissioners making the final decision, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Okay. I think we all think of the same thing, I just wanted the wording to be right. I support limiting the number of people to interview to a number, not a qualification statement, because our opinions might be different. If you, because we were talking, let's limit it to the number of people that are qualified. I might have three people in there that I think are qualified, and they might be different than yours, I'm going to throw out, let's limit it to three people.
I wouldn't support it.
I would not either, and respectfully, when we discuss this, I will tell you, I think there are three of the seven that appear to be very qualified to me, and I'm not trying to sway anything, I'm just giving you my opinion. I have reservations of two of the three, where I would say, I would encourage interviewing three, but possibly only two because of the reservation I have on one of them, so rather than just say we will do three, I would think we should discuss who our top candidates are. Why would, I suspect, I just suspect, because it was, and this is just me speaking, it was evident there were three very qualified, and four who didn't quite meet the same level of qualifications as the top three, and that's just my opinion, and it may be totally different from yours, so I think it would be appropriate to say, let's discuss who those are, probably in an executive session, and then say, during that process, we could say, okay, well, let's invite these three, or let's invite these two, or let's invite these four, and I would prefer rather just limit, let's discuss, and then we come up with how many to invite.
I agree, we need to do that, I'll tell you why, because there's qualified, you're up with somebody that's different, and on paper, blanket things like education or experience, and then there's the intangible things that...
While you're in, that's why you don't hire on...
That's right, well, you have interviews, and you don't want to limit yourself, because on paper, if somebody's lousy at a resume or whatever, you need to also get your opinion made for whether they're qualified or not.
There's a threshold level, in my opinion, a threshold level that says your experience qualifies you to move to the next level, but there's some that, I mean, we, you know, who just have, I don't know how to say it nicely, just don't really qualify.
That's right, they're not leaders, they're not whatever.
I'm trying to say it nicely, I mean...
Well, I threw the number three out, because I reviewed the application, and I thought I would be very comfortable interviewing three of these people, end of discussion, from my point, I didn't try to read anything into it more than that.
And I have reasons why, and I suspect, this is just me speaking on my opinion, three outstanding and rest, not, okay? So, but of the three, I've just finished, let me finish, Bill, and then I'll be happy listening, of the three, there are reasons why maybe we don't want to interview one of those three, and I have those written down, just to discuss.
I agree, and I actually think there's four, because they're, the other three, I think, I don't know if I can all, I think we can all agree, but that's the discussion we have to have, and four is not a whole bunch to interview, if we had 34 that were qualified, then we got to find the cut line to get it down to the top X, and so I think, I think we can get there, I think we need an executive session.
Is there any other discussion that needs to occur in open meeting before we...
I was going to move that we move to executive session to continue the discussion.
Well, technically, we need to offer public comment prior to that.
Apologize.
Just stay on the agenda, so, okay, anything else on the consideration of the process that we're going to go through? Process including having an executive session to talk about this first. Okay, public comment?
Kirkens.
Yeah.
Or Birdcham.
If not, the chair would entertain, if you need the language, I will pull it up real quick, a motion to move into executive session.
I know that we suspend the regular session, move it to executive session, and then we can reconvene on the executive session.
And if you would just add the reason you want to go into executive session, then I will...
Certainly, to discuss individual qualifications, recommendations for interviewing for the Office of Emergency Management director position, is that the right term, director?
Manager.
Manager.
With all due respect, I'm not sure that's legal. Counselor, would that all fall under personnel or not?
No, I mean, you can't go into executive session to discuss this, you need to have a workshop to discuss, I mean, if you want to discuss who the finalists are going to be, you can do it in a workshop by giving numbers and doing it like you've done before, but I would not do an executive session to go in and discuss this.
Which is why I thought it's a better ask. As I understand it, personnel matters would be a specific individual.
Right, and generally disciplinary issues, things like that, good point.
Okay, that being said, sir, would you consider withdrawing your motion?
Certainly will.
Thank you, was there a second? I didn't remember, I think it got to there. So then my question would be, do you want to continue this conversation now, numbering the candidates, do you want to, as counsel's indicated, schedule a workshop?
Let's do it now, because the workshop's be open, I think we ought to choose what candidates we would like to interview now, I would even like to pick a date to interview.
Okay.
That's my opinion, but I'm holding it to anything.
And I agree, just that consideration of the process, I'm just trying to make sure we're above board, because we have to have prior notice of a workshop to do this?
This isn't really going to be a workshop, then, if you're just going to go ahead and number them and choose the finalists now, that's already an agenda.
Please withdraw his motion.
No, the one about getting those other people in on it.
Oh, yeah, it's a good point, thank you. Plus, we're not posted on the agenda to make that selection today either, it was only for the process, when we were going to consider how we're going, not doing it.
I mean, you've chosen a process, and you, to me, it seemed like you just go ahead with the process, just number them, and just decide who your finalists are going to be, the ones you actually want to interview.
So the question is, do we wait till we get Kristi and Donna in?
Well, and I thought those were for the interview process, not for selecting who...
Oh, we want to narrow it down, we can narrow it down.
So I think...
I'm looking to narrow it down.
Let's just narrow it down.
I guarantee I couldn't number those from memory.
I can't either, let's get Donna in here.
I got their names, but I just wrote first names down, so I know who I liked and who I didn't, and I don't mean that in a...
Well, I think, then we just very adamantly need to remember we are discussing these candidates by number alone.
And we can number them the way she had them listed, we just need to get the names. Can we take like five minutes, I got to call Joanna, because...
By consent?
Sure.
Yes, we'll stand in recess. Timing is good.
I know, I know. What will you do with that?
I don't know.
Yeah, that window's open, she'll just go out there.
I don't have anything on 16th date.
It's not, there's nothing, I'm deleting, I do sometimes put things on, I don't know, when we do, we decide something with a sinculent thing, or something.
I don't have anything, but, well, we're just, it's got to be a potential date, we can't set it to stone, because we're inviting other people, right?
16th, all right.
Right.
About the 15th or the 16th.
Let's shoot for the 16th.
You're setting the interviews?
That's for the interviews.
Yeah, interview OEM, okay, so here are those candidates numerically. I thought we had four, oh, sorry, you got yours, Donna?
Yes, I just kept the small ones, too.
We're going to do it in this room?
Yeah, yeah, so I thought we should interview the top, one, two, and three, that was my, that's my takeaway from looking at those applicants, applications, sorry.
One, two, and three were my top three choices, if I can say why I have an issue with two and three, just things to think about. Two is, if we really feel that we, Troy lives in Arizona...
You don't mention names?
Sorry, I apologize, thank you. Candidate two lives in Arizona, and that's, to me, not a real complication, and number three's not available until August 5th, so I just...
You said two has an Arizona, you don't want to have him come up here, is that what you're saying?
I'm just thinking, unless we feel strongly that this is someone who we would truly consider hiring, do we really want that person to have to travel up from Arizona just to fill a slot, but if we feel that number two is a candidate we strongly might want to hire, then I think it's perfectly fine, I'm just throwing this out.
Okay, what I did, I did look at every one of them, and I looked at their formal education, looked at their job call, their experience, looked at their job, what I thought job locations be, then the others are intangibles, there's some intangibles there, and I said, to me, it was easy to throw out five, six, and seven, and, but, and I agree, one, two, and three are tight, and four, if you look before, at first I thought, hmm, but in fact, he got a lot of time, experience, that didn't...
Where's his frame?
On the job, so to me, it's worth understanding from an interview point of view to round it out, I don't want to sell ourselves short, as far as Troy, he wants the job, he did, looks as far as two, I don't, I think he applied, wanted to drive up here, too bad, and he, to me, was very qualified.
Number four to me, I have no issue, he's in Beulah, so it's not a major inconvenience for this person to come up here, the experience was mostly as a firefighter and a paramedic, which certainly is a portion of this that would make him qualified, but I didn't feel he had the same qualifications as one, two, and three.
That's where I shook out, I don't think he's qualified just because he's firefighter and paramedic, I think those other three out horse that significantly, but that's me, I was some kind of pleased to see the qualifications and credentials of the three that I thought we should interview.
I definitely was.
Oh, my God.
And I almost threw four out, but I didn't, because I got to look him at it, if you look a little deeper, let's hear what he's got to say.
I'm fine either way.
Yeah, again, I would give him consideration, I just don't believe he's qualified, but that's...
Kind of how I felt, I was on two and three, but if he feels strongly about four, I would not negate interviewing, just for that reason.
Nor would I, regardless of the number we interview, I'm assuming the best candidate's going to rise to the top anyway.
Right, and you know what, guys, in two of my experiences shown, there's more to it than... Right, and you know what, guys, in two of my experiences shown, there's more to it than, you know, the guy, I've seen PhDs can't change attire or lead a troop of boy scouts.
That's what we're gonna do.
Even though they're, that's why the interview is important. And so, uh, you know, a couple of these that I looked at that might be really hot, couldn't maybe get along and not interact with people choked up, I don't know, you can sure see that in an interview. That's why I wanted to...
I'm fine either way. I, I don't, I'm not strongly either way, I just, if we have a candidate that we don't feel is qualified, I think it's foolish to interview, but if you think there's a possibility there, let's interview. Or, or, number four.
My feeling.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm very lukewarm on number four, so it doesn't matter. If it, if it comes out different in an interview that looked on paper than...
Watson would take that into consideration.
I mean, we went to the trouble of trying to open it up, right?
Well, yeah, but you're qualified or you're not qualified on, on the application, that's where I was at, that's it.
Your interview is not gonna qualify you if your background doesn't qualify you.
You guys think strongly that the background didn't do it?
I felt like it didn't, but I wouldn't say, I strongly felt like he, you know, I just, I looked at him and I, yeah, he's not qualified, particularly by comparison, but, um...
That's how I feel. I'll go along with that.
And I just will say this...
Let me, let's take a look. You got that?
Yeah.
Let me just work at it.
It absolutely, and I kinda struggle with this. I get, when can you start? Love that thing. Where are you from? I don't care for that question, because it doesn't matter to me. If they're from Israel, if he wants to come here and interview, that's on him, that's not on us.
I understand what you're saying, but I think the location makes a very big difference in terms of, do you know our community? Do you know what your lifestyle's gonna be like if you move here? People moving, people who we hired to move here, I think, to me, it weighs in the decision that I know that someone has lived in this community and understands what it's like to live in a county with 4,000 people.
I mean, that's just me. And, and I'm philosophically on there, but if that's important, we should be asking that in the application, because we're gonna prejudge whether they even get an interview based on where they live. I don't think that's right, because...
And I understand, and I agree with you, my feeling was if candidate number two was someone who, well, he's got qualifications, but maybe, maybe not, we don't really want him, then...
I agree.
Why would he maybe come up here?
I agree with that a hundred percent.
But if we feel he's a, that's why I said a minute ago, if he's very strong, do we feel he's a viable candidate?
Yeah.
Get this gentleman, this is the person up here.
Okay, so I, I still think this guy's worth looking at. If you, if you don't, if you look into this and read between the lines on where, where he's been, it's not just firefighting and, you know, talking about leadership stuff as well and diversity. I think he's got it. I can go take a look, see what you think.
I did look, and I try not to read between the lines because, to me, that's where the interview comes from, but...
Well, let's interview him.
Yeah, I don't care.
I, I would say, let's interview this person. If you feel strongly, I don't wanna, I mean, we may turn around and go, wow, this guy's terrific, where have you been our whole life and I'm so glad that we got you into the interview. We don't know.
We don't know.
So let's do it. If you feel, you know, he's a viable candidate.
He's got a candidate.
I would strongly urge that we do, interview the, the top four. I don't have a problem. It's such an important job in our community. I mean, we know fire is coming, it's just wind. We know issues are gonna, floods are gonna happen.
So are we good with, um...
We gotta get the best person.
Just bringing the Arizona guy in.
Yeah, he's one of the four.
He's one of the four.
And so, Ms. Donna, we had voted to include you and Christie Coleman in the interviewing process for your recommendations, for us to make a decision. We're looking at July fifteenth as a possibility. And I would think we're right on, we oughta maybe have a couple backup days. How about fifteen, sixteen? We have a commissioner meeting on the seventeenth. Southeast Region OEM is in Canyon on the eighteenth. I was planning on going to that.
What time of the day is it?
One o'clock.
See, that's a lot of time that people should be able to, I mean, if you were doing it next Tuesday...
Right, and that's why we said, we talked about it, and then we decided, no, let's go. How about we start possibly fifteen and sixteen? Uh, we just scheduled a workshop in Wetmore on the seventeenth, so that won't work. You guys holler when you have something to add or detract here, 'cause I'm just throwing this stuff out.
And I'll, do you know if Christie's available on the fifteenth?
She told me she would be out the week of the eighth. Other than that, she said I should be available.
And I'll just tell him the fifteenth, and that'll be if that's...
Sixteenth is our preference.
The sixteen, oh, see.
But if we have to go to fifteen...
Did you say fifteen or sixteen?
Sixteen is the preference.
Oh, yeah, I had circled fifteen.
I know, I said fifteen or sixteen, but sixteen preference, fifteen backup.
Yep.
What time, uh, do you wanna start this?
Well, just don't have to drag the interviews on too long, so...
You wanna start at one o'clock, so people have an opt-in to get here?
Four, we figure forty-five minutes for each interview, so that's three thirty. Four thirty, yeah?
How long for an interview?
I'm thinking forty-five minutes. By the time we get him in, interview him, shuffle him out...
Let him answer questions.
And let him not have...
And it would be a four-hour process, 'cause we usually leave like fifteen minutes, half, so we could do a critique if we choose to.
Well, I'd say we better prepare to be here till five at least.
I can do that.
Because I would be all about making a decision that day.
Yep.
I missed the start time, I'm sorry.
Oh, we're still discussing.
Okay, good.
I don't know if we can make a date decision unless we...
Well, that's true.
We gotta be in a board meeting.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, um, and then our board meeting would be the next day if it's the sixteenth.
Yeah, we can consensus.
Yeah, that'll work.
We can consensus and then...
Discuss it on the next day?
We're good. Yeah, we need to...
Choose our candidate the next day.
On the Wednesday, so we need to make sure we get that on the agenda too, so...
I'm good.
Does that work? Sixteen, fifteen, deal on seventeen? Counselor, are you okay with that?
Mr. Fenn.
Are we all right with coming to consensus, or is that the same thing as making a decision?
No, I think it's, it's acceptable to just limit it, I mean, to narrow it down like this by consensus. This isn't making a final decision.
But I mean, when we interview, then later that day, should we say, "Okay, what do you guys think?" Or should that happen during a meeting?
You can discuss it, but don't come to a conclusion, and you can have your discussion...
So it's not coming to consensus?
Yeah.
Here's my thought.
And just, yeah, don't reach out, but definitely, you may have a feeling, you create, you're gonna have a good idea where you're all at.
We might all say the same thing about this great leadership capability, et cetera.
But just let it go at that, and then at the next...
'Cause I'd like to be able to go to that meeting in public and say, "I really like candidate X." Well, I don't care for candidate X. We gotta have those open conversations, don't we? And then come to consensus.
Where's the meeting at?
The meeting's in Wetmore, the interview will be in here.
And so can one of you call me if you want me to make the offer, so then I could make the offer and call you back, so you could announce that candidate, that exception? You know, you could do it, you know, at the beginning or something.
Call the email, 'cause we don't get a phone down there.
But that way, you guys could, if it's, if it's cut and dry, it just slips, like, real nicely, I can make a call and you guys could be over.
Saves us a week easy, so, yeah, I'll have to do it email, 'cause there's no phone service down there, but great point. So you're okay on fifteen or sixteen, whichever of those days boil out? You want me to call Christie, or do you wanna?
I, I think I have her cell, I'm pretty sure, and just to, just to confirm that she's good with that. I'll move everyone forward toward the sixteen.
And if something blows up?
Ordinarily, once in a while, somebody will say they can't, but if they really want it, they'll drop something around, so...
Okay. All right, good, then would you take these papers back, please? Do you all right with that? I don't wanna float them.
I gave her mine already.
Thank you, ma'am. And then, I'm assuming we probably want those applications in front of us when we interview?
I definitely do, please.
Do you want copies?
Yeah, do you want electronically or hard copy?
Whichever's easier.
And what do you want, just, I mean, some of these are huge.
I know. I don't need certifications.
I, I just need...
Just the hand itself?
Application and a resume?
Yeah. I think one of them didn't even have a resume, and there's a reason for that.
And I asked for cover letters as well, so we could see that they don't write like I do.
I don't think candidate one actually filled out a resume.
Did not, I'm assuming, because she publicly...
And it did not bother me one iota, for obvious reasons.
She had everything else on...
So, probably hard copy, should only be two or three pages per candidate, right?
Two, three to four.
Yeah.
Tied at four.
Then, the thing about hard copies, we can make notes as we go.
Okay, do, how do, do we wanna come up with a question, do we wanna come up with a list of questions? I think we oughta invite the fire chief and the police chief, and if they have questions they would like to ask, to recommend to us.
Oh, if they wanna ask, they choose to.
No, they may wanna send, I mean, Shannon may say, "These are the three tough questions I would wanna know the answer to." And then we could choose what to ask or not.
Just submit their potential questions to us.
And they're the same with Christie Coleman?
Yeah.
And you just want him to come just to you, and then if you want me to make copies or something? Or whomever, it doesn't matter.
Well, we don't need to have Christie do it.
Well, just if she had...
Well, she can ask herself.
I mean, she may have...
She's on the committee.
Okay.
I would just get, if you wanna ask anybody, ask Shannon and Kit, and if you got some other preferences, get a couple.
If you got any questions you'd like to submit, would you have...
It's limited to two.
And the vote is gonna be five people, right, or is it gonna be...
No, voting will be three.
Three.
Recommendations will be two O's.
Oh, so...
Five O's.
So I need a copy for Christie?
Yes, yourself and us three.
Quinn, do you want a copy?
If I could, please.
Okay.
Do you want Donna and I to work on all that, get that in place? Does somebody else wanna take the lead on that?
To what?
Uh, to make sure Christie's good, to get solicit questions to be submitted to us.
I think Donna can do it.
Well, then if I can't get through to Shannon, you know, as long as Tom can talk to Shannon, or, or...
Shannon'd be pretty good, yeah. Shoot you an email and tell me if you can't get him.
And would it be Kit Shai or, or...
Dave Tomson?
Tomson, or, you know?
Give it to both of them, say, "We want two questions."
I have no problems submitting questions, but we may or may not use...
We don't have to.
Oh, and it might spark you to something, you think, oh, yeah, that wasn't...
And then we want these questions on paper.
We're not obligated to tell them.
Distributed amongst the five of us.
Correct.
You know, like we have before, you know, we try and stay pretty close to the question, but sometimes a question precipitates a, a different question.
Right, on a personality with that.
We're fine with that, but at least we're trying to ask the candidates basically the same questions so it could evaluate on an equal level.
Sure.
Counselor, do we... I don't even know how to ask the question, really. Do we need to deal with the fact that we are not having an executive session? We never went into executive session, I know, so we don't have to come out of that, but do we let the record reflect that we did not have an executive session?
That's the thing, you state that there was, we determined there was no need for an executive session.
We still had a process, discussion.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen, before we close the meeting out? So, would you see if Meredith is capable of coming back and recording and live streaming? Actually, this should have all, no, yeah, it should have been recorded.
I locked the door so somebody didn't crack me in the head.
When you leaned over, looked at the...
Well, we had Donna, she...
Are we gonna be in trouble for not recording that? Okay. Can you fire us back up, please, or are we?
Y'all were.
Recorded?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
And livestream?
Uh-huh.
Good.
Good. So, we determined there was no reason to go into executive session, obviously. We continue our business in open session. Anything else come before the board? Chair would entertain a motion.
I'm moving adjourn.
We're moving to secondary adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? There he is.
I got heat tracks.
Yes, sir, all right, fun. If you still get there in time, huh?
I hope there's some spaghetti.